Good evening, everybody. We'd like to welcome you to the Gilbert Planning Commission meeting of April 3, 2013. Can I get a roll call?
Chairman Jethro for Whitman.
Here.
Vice Chairman Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Bianchi.
Here.
Commissioner Chad Fuller.
Here.
Commissioner Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Commissioner Christopher Sipple.
Present.
Commissioner Bob Steiger.
Here.
Aldernick Kyle Paul.
Here.
Thank you. Can I get an approval of the agenda?
Chairman, we'd like to make a couple of changes to this evening's agenda. We would like to move items number six, Z12-05, number seven, GP13-03, number eight, Z13-06, and number 10, S12-08, because that is requesting a continuance to May 1st to our consent agenda.
Do we have a motion by Vice Chairman Peterson? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Right, moving on to communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters not on the agenda. The commission's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Is there anybody here that would like to speak under those pretenses? I don't see none. We'll move on to the public hearing consent portion of our public hearing. Consent public hearing items will be heard at one public hearing. After the consent public hearing, these items may be approved by a single motion. At the request of a member of the commission or staff, an item may be removed from the consent calendar and may be heard and acted upon separately. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent public hearing and approved under a single motion. And again, for those items, we have item number six, Z12-05, item number seven, GP13-03, item number eight, Z13-06, and item 10, which is S12-08. And again, S12-08 is a request for a continuance to the May 1st meeting. Are there any cards or anybody here wishing to speak on those items? I don't think that we have any in our hands. Okay, with that, do we have a motion? Anybody?
Chairman.
Commissioner Fuller.
I make a motion that we hereby approve the consent calendar as outlined.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fuller. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to the public hearing non-consent portion of our public hearing. The non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. So again, there's public comment forms in the back of the room. If you wish to speak on an item, please make sure to fill it out and bring it up to this front table here. They'll get it to us, but make sure to indicate whether you are in support or in opposition to the item and whether you wish to speak.
Chair and commissioners.
Yes.
Our staff planner who would be presenting that case hasn't made it across the street. We'd like to request that number 11 and 12 be heard.
Okay. Does anybody have any problems with that? Okay. Then the first cases that we will hear is GP12-08. And I'd like to hear them both together, and we can vote on them separately. But GP12-08, which is a minor general plan amendment to change the land use classification of 14.36 acres of real property from shopping center land use classification to residential 14 to 25, as well as Z12-22, which is amend ordinances number 16, or 617, 1287, and 1708 to rezone approximately 14.36 acres of real property generally located on Civic Center Drive west of Gilbert Road from Shopping Center zoning district with a planned area development overlay. Zoning district to multifamily medium density with a planned area development overlay and to amend conditions of development in the Gilbert Town Square planned area development as follows. Increase the maximum building height, decrease the minimum front perimeter building setbacks and landscape area, and reduce the minimum common open space requirement. With that, we'll open the public hearing and welcome Mr. Mike Mollo.
Thank you, Chairman Whitman, members of the commission. Cases GP12-08 and Z12-22 were heard at your study session on February 6. And we had a very general review at that point in time. Also at that point in time, the three neighborhood meetings that have been held for these two cases had already been held. And this is a request for both a general plan amendment, which is a minor, as well as a rezoning. Here's the specific request. Minor general plan amendment from residential shopping center SC land use classification to residential 14 to 25 D use per acre land use classification. That land use classification accommodates multifamily development. And the second request is to rezone from shopping center zoning district with a PAD overlay to multifamily medium zoning district, again with a PAD overlay. This graphic gives you a general indication of the location of the 14-acre project, just to make sure you're oriented. We are located right here on the site plan, which is the Civic Center complex. So right across Gilbert Road. Here's Gilbert Road, which has a little curve in it as it approaches Civic Center Drive. Warner Road is up here. And this entire area that I'm identifying with the pointer is the Gilbert Town Square planned area development. The consolidated canal is located over on the western and northern boundary of the indicated site. And residential development SF7 zoning is located across the canal to the north and Probably all I need to say about that one. Here is the zoning exhibit, so it just gives you a closer view of the area that is being requested for general plan amendment and for rezoning. What these two graphics show you are the, number one, the original PAD, which is located here on the right side of the screen. The original PAD, which was approved in 2000, was always intended to be a mixed-use complex. It was always viewed as a very unique piece of property because it's not bordered by two arterials, it's not bordered by a freeway interchange, but it was going to have a fairly intense mixture of uses. So what you can see on this site plan is retail pads that have been developed, for the most part, out on the Gilbert Road frontage. You can see buildings that are located flanking each side of Civic Center Drive, which was the basic main street of the project, that are located here. You can see that the project originally contained a hotel component that was supposed to be up at the northeast corner with some frontage on Gilbert Road. And you'll also see that there was a sizable office component that was located up against the canal. The first phase of the development to develop was the theaters and some of the adjoining retail, some of which has been turned into school uses that are located here in the southwest corner of the property. And there was additional retail uses that were proposed, as well as parking for this area. And there were additional retail uses over here. So the original concept for Gilbert Town Square was truly a mixed-use with retail, restaurant, office, hotel, and entertainment uses combined. In 2006, this PAD development plan was amended, and that is the current development plan that is enforced today. Let me go back. And what this shows is the amendment to allow the Brunswick Zone to go in. So this building down here in the lower central portion of the site is the Brunswick Zone, which wasn't originally envisioned on the PAD in 2000, but when they came in in 2006, we had them go through a PAD amendment because the development plan is actually part of the ordinance, and the site needed to be developed in substantial conformance with that development plan. You'll also notice that in this area of the site, which is part of the site of the subject property in this evening's cases, it just says no change from the zoning exhibit site plan for Gilbert Town Square that was adopted pursuant to the ordinance 1287. That's the original 2000 ordinance that was approved for this property. One thing that's not shown on here, but I will point out to you, is that in the 2006 timeframe, about almost exactly seven years ago, there was a proposal for a Walmart on this site. And as is required by our code, there were neighborhood meetings for the Walmart, and there was lots of public testimony at several of the neighborhood meetings for the Walmart. And I would have to say, in reviewing the minutes of those meetings, that 99% of the people were opposed to the Walmart at that time. The Walmart never went forward, and it never turned into an actual case, but I did want to point that out to you. Something else that I'd like to point out to you that isn't in your packet is that this project is the subject of a development agreement, which was approved at the end of 1999. And I'll read from one of the opening paragraphs of that development agreement. "The project is intended to create an extension of the downtown area of the town, creating an urban village located adjacent to the town municipal center. The project will contain a main street and a series of plazas that encourages pedestrian-oriented activities that will help create a sense of community to the project." So again, all of this, I think, points to the uniqueness of this site. What this graphic shows you is the contextual site plan. So what we have here is this project, which is inserted into the 14-acre vacant parcel. Here you can see the theaters and the adjoining retail complex. These buildings here in purple, which we refer to as the A buildings, and the B buildings are basically retail or restaurants on the ground floor, and then they have offices above. Those are built. These buildings, which are the D buildings, are not yet constructed, but they have been approved and are on the original development plan. Here's the Brunswick Zone that was approved in 2006. Here are all the pads along Gilbert Road. You can see the hotel is no longer here. What we have is a Bank of America up in this area. And then you can see, sorry about this thing, it's very touchy, you can see the remaining office buildings that remain, which are over here in the plan, which are not yet built. This is the proposed PAD development plan. So if this case is approved, this will be the new PAD development plan for Gilbert Town Square, which will amend the 14 acres for the apartment project. Here's the site plan. So what this shows you is the combination of different buildings that are located on the site. It may be a little bit hard to read from the dais, but I'll point out a few features here. What we have adjoining the canal are two-story apartment buildings. We have a three-story apartment building located in this area of the site. We have four-story apartment buildings that are in this backward L configuration here, as well as a four-story building here. We also have a three-story building here, which is close up to the main street area. This is a four-story building, and this is the club and the office with some of the recreational amenities that are located here. This graphic shows you a line of sight analysis. So what we're looking at here is a three-story building, which I can go back and, let me just go back and show you where that three-story is. So the three-story building that we're looking at for the line of sight analysis is located right here, and the line of sight is being taken across the consolidated canal over here, across this open space tract and across the canal right-of-way. What this line of sight shows is the building, the remainder of the site, including the open space tract. It shows the canal bank with the existing Central Trail, which is located over here. Shows some of the landscaping schematically, obviously. And it shows the first houses that are located on the other side of the canal. So this distance over here from the building over to here is 255 feet. Now, the two-story buildings, if we go back to those two-story buildings that are located over here, those are located approximately 165 feet from the residences on the other side of the canal. Going on to the amended development standards, this project is requesting four different amended development standards. Common open space normally would be required in the MFM district at 40% of the net site area. The applicant is asking to reduce that to 34% of the net site area. The reason for that, and the reason that staff feels it's justified, and we recommend approval of that, is that that does not include the tract that separates this project from the canal right-of-way. So if you include that tract, which the applicant has an agreement with Gilbert Town Square Association to landscape that and maintain that tract, we would actually exceed the 40% of the net site open space. So they're asking for a 6% reduction of the net site, but that's only because the tract, which is off the site proper, actually provides additional open space in excess of what the code requires. Minimum or maximum height, the second amended development standard that is being requested, the code would require normally 40 feet maximum. The applicant is asking for a six-foot increase of that maximum height for the four-story buildings so that they can accommodate nine-foot ceilings in those buildings. Staff feels that, given the buffering to the residential communities to the west, the fact that the immediate neighbors are commercial in nature, and the fact that it's really only six feet of additional height, we feel that that is also warranted, and we're supportive of that. Minimum perimeter building setbacks from 30 feet to 20 feet. That's on Civic Center Drive. So the staff has actually encouraged the applicant to amend their standards along the Civic Center Drive frontage. And the reason that we've done that is because we want to maintain that main street theme with very narrow setbacks, bringing the buildings as close to the sidewalks as possible in order to enhance that pedestrian feel. Similarly, the minimum perimeter landscape area would have to go down to 12 feet from 20 feet, again, in order to match what's already existing along Civic Center Drive with the existing development. This graphic really just gives you a little bit better indication of what this will look like at, you know, from the aerial perspective at the entry. So again, this building here is the building that really needs, is the building that really needs the reduction in the perimeter setback and the perimeter landscape area, because they're bringing it out to the frontage in order to match the setback of the buildings over here to the east. Similarly, the clubhouse would also be brought to that front setback level. This is the entryway to the project over here with the gated entry located in this area, and these are some of the recreation amenities. One other thing that I'd like to go into that really isn't addressed in any of the slides, but it is in my staff report on pages three and four, is the general plan justifications that we feel are pertinent. I will not read all of the goals and policies for you, because staff believes that they meet over a dozen of the goals and policies from the general plan, but I'd just like to highlight a couple of these. On page three, goal one, policy 1.1, maintain a balance of housing types and provide a variety of employment opportunities with easily accessible retail and service uses. We feel that this does maintain a balance of housing types by introducing a housing component that is in close proximity to retail and service uses within Gilbert Town Square. I'd also point out that, based on professional planning literature, if you really want to have successful mixed-use projects, the one use that you have to have integrated into your project is housing. Policy 1.8, promote revitalization of underutilized industrial and commercial properties. Anyone who has followed this project from its original development in 2000 has seen many of the tenants on Gilbert Road or off Gilbert Road go in business and out of business. And part of that is due to the fact that this is a fairly unique site. It's got some parcels that are deep off of Gilbert Road, doesn't have a lot of great visibility. But there's been a lot of businesses that have opened and then closed over the 12 or 13 years since this project has been developed. We believe that this project will revitalize Gilbert Town Square. On page four, goal seven, policy 7.3, interconnect neighborhoods, retail, and employment areas with a system of pedestrian and bicycle routes and trails. That's what this project does. It fronts on pedestrian routes on Civic Center Drive, and it backs up to the Central Trail, which is a major bike trail spine throughout Gilbert. And finally, policy 5.3, encourage projects to protect the privacy of adjacent single-family residential uses through effective placement of landscape buffers, screening, shielded light fixtures, and other mitigation measures. Many of these things are going to be addressed at the design review phase of this development, things like lighting and the specific landscaping that is being proposed. But staff feels that the applicant has, over the several months that we've been working with them on this project, addressed many of those issues by moving buildings away from the canal, reducing the height of the closest buildings along the canal, and breaking up the mass of the buildings by reorienting them. Staff is recommending approval of this project, subject to the conditions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mollo. Is there any questions or comments for staff? Commissioner Fuller, or Bianchi, sorry.
Mike, so with the current commercial zoning, what's the maximum height allowed there now?
The maximum height in the SC district?
Yes.
I would have to double-check that, but I believe it is 30 feet. Maybe someone at the table that has a code.
Okay. And then, so this is for multifamily medium, not the more dense multifamily large, correct? So we don't have, so a step down from this, if people are worried about the density, would be almost an SF, single-family attached product, like a townhome product? Is that correct?
Chairman Whitman, Commissioner Bianchi, this is actually the MFM. So we're looking at the 14 to 25 dwelling unit category, which, other than the Heritage Village Center and the Village Center in the gateway, this is the highest-density multifamily district that we have.
And then, as far as traffic goes on this site, if we looked, when the Walmart came through, we probably didn't get, did it go far enough to look at a traffic study? But when we're introducing that many people with the access and the ingress and egress we have now, is that a concern from traffic, or no?
I believe our traffic engineer is here to answer specific traffic questions, but I can tell you that the traffic, there was never a traffic analysis provided for the Walmart proposal, because they didn't make it that far.
Okay.
But the traffic analysis that was prepared for this project was a trip generation comparison, and this project actually results in a reduction in traffic from what would be approved on the existing plan.
That was my question, was with the chip generation, if that were to build up as commercial, what the difference would be? Okay, thanks.
Yes, and we have verified the height on the SC is actually 35 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Mr. Steiger.
Yeah, Al, what's the applicant's rationale for wanting to go four-story? If I look around all the different, the apartment complexes that I drive by and I'm aware of, I see three-story buildings, not four stories.
Commissioner Steiger, I'll let the applicant answer that specifically. All I can tell you is that they have a unit count in mind for the property. Being able to have some of the buildings at four stories allows them to reduce the height of some of the other buildings that are in more sensitive locations on the site while still maintaining the general unit count and density.
Any further questions for staff? All right, thank you, Mr. Mollo. Is the applicant here and wishes to speak? If you could state your name and city of residence for the record, that'd be great.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Ed Bowley reside in Phoenix. 702 East Osborne is our office address. We certainly appreciate staff's recommendation for approval. I appreciate Mike's presentation, both in the staff report and here verbally this evening, and in your study session a couple of months ago, and I don't think you want me to go back through all of that, line item by line item. We do believe that staff is spot-on with respect to the land use on this site. Without intending to be derogatory, we are a somewhat buried vacant infill site. There has not been retail activity occur on this site. There's no reason to believe that there will be retail activity occur on this site. In fact, to the area which Mike has addressed in his staff report and touched on here this evening, this particular center, which has had its challenges over the years, it needs shoppers and it needs diners. And per the literature that Mike referenced, the key, or certainly a critical key to successful, viable mixed-use development is to include a residential component. And not a token residential component, but a meaningful residential component where people can at least have the opportunity to live, work, shop, and play close to home if they choose to do so. We certainly agree with staff's various findings with respect to the general plan. Agree that we satisfy over a dozen, maybe closer to 20, of the goals and policies in the general plan. And I think that while sometimes we look at just the land use map, it's those goals and policies that really create the core and the soul of a general plan that sometimes leads to a map and changes in the map. sometimes leads to a map and changes in the map. We not only worked with staff and did many of the things that, that Mike talked about with respect to building orientations and setbacks and, and in some cases, moving a building closer in order to be consistent with the character, the theme of the center that we were to be consistent with, but we also listened to our neighbors. We understand we have some neighborhood opposition tonight, and I won't attempt to predict what that may or may not be. If I may, I'd like to reserve some rebuttal time for that. But I can tell you that we had multiple neighborhood meetings, started out rough, got better. All along the way, we thought we were in good shape until earlier today. Be that as it may, we'll listen to neighbors and, and respond, I hope in accordance with, with what the commission believes would be appropriate. In, in respect to some of the changes that we made in listening to staff and in listening to neighbors, Mike talked some about moving a building closer to the street, about doing some reorientation of some buildings, how it is that we ended up with three, four-story buildings and so on and so forth. And I don't know if this is showing up anywhere or not. But what, what occurred is when we went to our first neighborhood meeting, oh, in September, I believe it was of last year, these two buildings, the two buildings that are in green that are today two-story buildings, were at that time three-story buildings as were most all buildings on this site plan. I think we had one four-story building located here. And we had that one four-story building in part in order to emphasize the urban character of the center that we're being a mixed-use component of and so on. A critical issue to neighbors at that neighborhood meeting is that we convert those buildings to two-story. We talked about density, we talked about height, we talked about setbacks, landscaping, a variety of things. But one of the real challenges that, that my clients and their architects dealt with is, okay, how do we do that? How do we not sacrifice substantial amounts of density because it needs to be a meaningful development to be successful, not only for us but for the mixed-use component, and still provide the two-story buildings that, at least in that meeting, were very important to some neighbors, some of which made us feel if we made that change, we would be in much better shape with them. Well, what we did is took those two buildings that were three-story and converted this to, reconfigured and converted this to four-story, reconfigured and converted that to four-story. Now importantly so, at least from our perspective in doing that, we were also extremely sensitive to line of sight going back across the canal. Mike was able to show you a two-story and a, and a three-story line of sight, but I can tell you, as he'd indicated, the two-story line of sight is about 165 feet. The three-story line of sight is, I believe, about 255. The four-story line of sight is over 300 feet from a four-story building to the nearest house. And that four-story building is separated not only by distance, but it's separated by landscaping onsite, of course, by parking canopies, in some cases by other buildings, by landscaping on our side of the wall, and as Mike mentioned, landscaping on the outside of the wall on what is currently a bear track that separates our property line from the canal. So there is over a football field with all kinds of buffers and separations that are occurring there, something that we thought was responsible and appropriate in creating this urban mixed-use environment where our height is closest to the commercial components, consistent with the theming that we were asked to match, but still being very respectful of neighbors by limiting those two buildings to two-story as we were requested to do. In dealing with a variety of issues with staff, I think as Mike alluded to, we worked on technical issues, we worked on design issues, we worked on theming issues and so on. And I believe the summary of Mike's report would be, we did the things that we were asked to do to achieve the goals and policies that are so important in the general plan. That wasn't an easy job, either for my client or, or for staff or the architects involved and so on, but we were challenged to do it, and I believe as Mike's report reflects, the plan does that in the context of land use, building orientation, stair stepping of height, proximity to streets, and other factors like that. I can go on into additional details if you'd like. My anticipation is if you have questions of me, you'll ask them. If you don't, perhaps I can respond further during rebuttal to the extent there are issues with heights or land use or other kinds of things. But to reemphasize a couple other points, as, as Mike did, we did a traffic study, did the traffic comparison, and while every multifamily case I've ever been involved in, there is a concern by some people about traffic here, as Mike indicated, the traffic study done by traffic engineers compared to the traffic that's permitted on the site today were less on a daily basis, were less in the morning peak, and were less in the afternoon peak. With respect to other comparisons and so on, again, we're doing the right things with building setbacks, landscaping, dressing up the canal, all of those kinds of things which we believe are consistent with what's encouraged in your general plan. Ending where I began, we appreciate hard work by staff, we appreciate opportunities to interface with a number of neighbors along the way. We, we don't know what all will be said here in a few moments, but I hope I'm able to respond to it. And we do ask that your commission, when the time is right, recommend approval in accordance with staff's recommendation because, again, we believe it's the right recommendation with respect to both the minor general plan amendment and the rezoning application. If you have questions, I'll do my best answer.
Great, thank you, Mr. Bow. Is there any questions for Mr. Bow? Not at this time.
Josh.
Oh, Josh, Commissioner Ayler.
Yeah, I just wanted, you had mentioned a distance from building seven and four, those distances, which are the two closest four stories? So what, what's the distance that you're, you're saying from, from the edge there to the nearest home?
From?
It would be the two four, closest four stories. The two Ls, yeah.
This one and this one. This one is over 300 feet, and this one is, I believe, further away than that one. So both of them are north of 300 feet from the nearest house, or as you know, more than a football field away.
And you're, the two two stories was mentioned, they were 165?
This separate. Yes, these two buildings are separated by a little more than a half a football field.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Bow? Thank you. Okay, with that, we have a few cards of, of those wishing to speak or to provide comment. The first card, and again, if, if you wish to speak on this item or any of the items on our, on this evening's agenda, please be sure to fill out a, a blue card that's in the back on the table and bring it up to some, a member of staff up here at the table. The first card I have is from Mr. Richard Brooks. Says he wishes to speak, doesn't indicate whether he's in favor or opposed. And just as a general policy, we usually have a timer. Each, each speaker's allowed about three minutes, so if you could...
Sure.
Try and abide within that, that'd be great.
Will do.
Thank you.
My name's Richard Brooks. I've lived in, excuse me, Raven Ranch for 13 years. When I purchased my home, it was with the understanding that parcels were zoned two-story commercial. And I feel that going from two-story commercial to four-story multifamily is, is over the top. I'm part of the community, and we recognize and support merchants of Gilbert Town Square. I feel it's extremely, an extremely fair compromise that, that we limit these buildings to three stories. I'm part of the community currently supporting the merchants in Gilbert Town Square. My family enjoys ice cream and hot dogs with Mike at his shop. We have Greek food with Sylvia, the owner there, that hugs us when we come in. We have pizza with Sal and his family. And I support revitalizing Gilbert Town Square, but this revitalization does not require four-story buildings. I keep hearing over a football field in distance to the four stories, the distance, as, as we had clarified, is 314 feet. A football field is 360 feet. End of end zone, end zone. So it's really more like the back of my house, my wall, my patio door is at the five-yard line. And then my pool is at the 15-yard line. And then, when my family, my children and my wife are out there in the pool trying to enjoy the day, they look over the wall and they don't see those goalposts. At the top of the goalpost at the other end of the football field is a bank of balconies owned by strangers. So again, I feel that four stories is excessive. And as you said, Commissioner Steiger, when I drive around Gilbert, I don't see four stories either. I see two, I see three, they're very successful. The same could be accomplished here in Gilbert Town Square. And as I understand it, the applicant originally submitted this plan with 307 units. That hasn't changed. And I believe my home and my neighborhood will be giving up a lot and feel the applicant needs to give in as well. My expectation of privacy is very reasonable. And again, based on the surrounding zoning, when I purchased my home, previous multifamily developments that exist in Gilbert as well, and we're in the early stages of recovering in property value, this would be a tremendous setback. And I ask that you prevent that and you limit this development to three stories.
Great, thank you, Mr. Brooks. Any questions for Mr. Brooks? Okay, Commissioner Ayler?
Yeah, in saying that you'd be in favor with three-story, would you be in favor with building one and two to be three-story, the, the joining, the two nearest, the ones that are two-story right now in this plan?
Right, no, I, what my suggestion is, limit the four-story buildings to three stories.
Right, so, so hold the two stories and, because, Mike?
Right.
Three to four, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Steiger?
My name's Mike.
Okay. Anybody else?
No.
Commissioner Sippel?
Can you just, I'm making the assumption you must live on Oak.
I do.
You do, okay, very good, thank you.
And we don't actually have to ask for a specific address, as we just asked for the city that you reside in, so I think we got that at the beginning. Thank you. All right, up next is Mr. Guy Carpenter says he's opposed and wishes to speak. Mr. Carpenter, if you could state your name and city of residence?
Hi, Chairman Whitman and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Guy Carpenter. I do live in Raven Ranch in Gilbert, the town of Gilbert. I appreciate the time that the staff and the project team has put into this, but I'm concerned in general about how this proposed project and the changes to both the general plan and the zoning case, and the zoning continue to undermine the original plans for the area. I'm sympathetic to the businesses there. We too use those businesses for shopping and retail and for entertainment and for restaurants, but I, I'm not convinced that 307 units will be the savior to them. Our community, our neighborhood supports those businesses, as does Settlers Point and the other ones around it, and I'm just not convinced that 300 apartments are going to be the savior. However, if you do approve the project, I also prefer that the four-story buildings be reduced to three and that the two-story stay as two. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Any questions? Mr. Carpenter? None, thank you. All right, I have a few more cards. I have one from Lenore Brooks, says I'm opposed and I do not wish to speak, and the comment she wrote, only permit three-story buildings. Another card is from Drew Burgett Berger. I do not want to allow four stories, keep at max of three stories, obviously opposed and doesn't wish to speak. Lauren Shaposh says that she's opposed and does not wish to speak. I have another one, is opposed and does not wish to speak, and that's from Ryan Stokes. Opposed to height proposals would like to request two stories. I think we have one additional.
They don't wish to speak, they would like the ask, the questions asked that are on the sheet, please.
Okay. This is by Chad Kennedy, does not wish to speak. Will these units be rented or owned? Is there a crime impact report? And I don't, I, I gather from the, the application that we received, that's proposed for rental units.
Yeah, I don't think they're coming in with a condo plot, right.
And I, I'm not sure if there's a crime report, impact report that's been prepared or not, but we can certainly ask the applicant during the rebuttal to get an answer to that. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this matter? I don't have any additional cards. Okay with that, we'll go ahead and invite the applicant back up for rebuttal. And if you could maybe address the question, is there a crime impact report that's been prepared?
Thank you, Chair. There has not been a crime impact report prepared by the development team. To the best of my knowledge, town staff typically doesn't prepare a crime impact report either. I can tell you, however, that as you know from your materials, the site is gated, it is secured, it is, to the extent anyone in any setting can build a safe environment, that's part of what's been woven into this and part of what's considered with staff's review and our architects and others' review as well. We certainly do not believe that our residents are going to be criminals. It's going to be a high-end, high-rent kind of community, and we don't want crime coming to our development any more than any of the businesses or any residents in the area want crime coming to their development. So no crime report, but sensitivity to crime-related design is part of what's considered in getting this far into the processes and may or may not be part of what's considered through the DRB fine-tuning processes as well. With respect to some of the items that were, that were mentioned by the speakers, it is true that typically in Gilbert today, buildings are three stories or multifamilies, a combination of two and three. Most of those, not all, most of those are located in what I would consider to be, that are built today, considered to be a suburban-type setting. And I know suburban versus urban are both gray area terms, but this particular site located within this mixed-use development, which as Mike indicated, is intended, at least big-picture-wise, to be sort of an extension of the downtown urban environment and so on, we are not suburban. We are intentionally urban, we are intentionally the residential component of a mixed-use urban development. And height and variations in buildings, both vertically and horizontally, in order to tie in with the theming elsewhere and the overall master plan is part of what helps to achieve not only that dwelling unit count, but also achieve that architectural interest and the urban setting and excitement that's important in order to make this not only a residential component, but a successful residential component because that too is important for it to do its job within this mixed-use master plan. It seems to be that there's a great deal of focus on three-story and, and I guess the request is that when we agreed to reduce some buildings from three-story to two, it's good that we did that, but let's leave those at two and then let's drop everything else to three when everything else is what we used in order to make up what we were losing. Well, the reality is that to scrape the top floors off of the four-story buildings, all of which, and I always thought a football field, when I was trying to run from one end to the other, was 300 feet, but I, I get it, from one end zone to the other, but be that as it may, the four-story buildings are a heck of a long ways away from the nearest house. And we already talked about lots of separations between here and there, but let's bring something into perspective. If this development were, if this site were to be developing with commercial buildings under the current approved zoning that allows two-story, 35-foot-tall commercial buildings, I have got to believe that those buildings would back up to what I'm going to call our west, northwest property line. There is just no question that they would face outwardly. SC's rear yard setback requirement for two-story, 35-foot-tall buildings is 15 feet. And that's appropriate. But the fact is that not only are these two-story buildings set back far more than 15 feet, the three-story and the four-story buildings are set back 20 times, the three stories are set back 20 times that SC setback requirement. Personally, I don't think we should be punished for that. I think that's a good thing, where typically in multifamily developments, they back up to a property line, and on the other side of that property line is single-family. Not a trail, not a canal, not another trail, and more distance, but single-family development. Here, we have massive distances, multiple layers of landscaping, walls, parking canopies, two-story buildings and other things to mitigate those concerns. Saying that we will scrape the fourth floors off of these buildings, which are intentionally stair-stepped toward the urban commercial aspect of this master plan, and I'm not saying it's intentionally saying this, but the effect of what it's saying is to kill this development. It removes about 75 dwelling units from this development. That's about 25% of the overall dwelling units in this property. Staff has never had a concern with the density that's proposed here. If anything, I think staff probably would have encouraged maybe more density in order to make sure that we're maximizing the residential opportunity in this mixed-use element. But certainly scraping off the top floor and removing 75 units isn't the right thing to do. It doesn't achieve the kinds of things that your general plan asks that we all achieve. And it's absolutely over the top compared to what could be built on this site today under the existing zoning with a 15-foot rear yard setback. Something that we think at least is important, and it's included in your package, is a letter in support from the Gilbert Town Square Association. And that letter, which is in your report, talks about they've reviewed the exhibits carefully and so on and so forth. And I'm sure they did. And they see this development as an asset to Gilbert Town Square. I think that's a meaningful letter that speaks volumes about how it is that the owners and merchants and restaurateurs and other within this master plan are saying, please, bring us some residents, bring us a high-quality residential development with residents who have some money in their pocket to spend it in some stores, spend it in some restaurants, and do whatever we can to help make this mixed-use center viable. We'd appreciate the opportunity to do that. We believe that our heights are appropriate. We believe our land use is appropriate. We believe our setbacks are extraordinary, and I'm confident that we will be a compatible neighbor to everyone in the area.
Great, thank you, Mr. Bull. Is there any questions for Mr. Bull? Commissioner Bianchi?
Just a quick question. It might be hinging on design review, but if we're talking a four-story product, is the point to have external staircases, or are these going to be served internal through an elevator or internal system like that? Or are these going to be all external on the?
Elevators.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bull. We do have a few letters that we received today, in addition to those that were in our packet, but I will just briefly reference, we have several of them, but one that had about 90 signatures that I generally counted that, and I'll read it very quickly, it's two paragraphs long, but it was addressed to the Planning Commission and Town Council. And it says, "As residents of Raven Ranch, we are very concerned about the proposed rezoning and plan for apartment buildings in Gilbert Town Square. These concerns include traffic, public safety, privacy and property values. Our immediate concern is the drastic reduction in privacy and subsequent reduction in property value that would result from construction of the proposed four-story towers. We purchased our homes with the expectation that two-story commercial properties would be developed in this space. This creates a very reasonable expectation of privacy for us. Since we recognize this development has benefits to Gilbert Town Square, we simply ask that this development be limited to three stories in an effort to alleviate some of the reduction in privacy and property value to our homes. We appreciate your time and consideration." So again, many of the other letters reference very similar concerns that we received, and we won't read them all out tonight, just to give you a gist of what we received on the dais that wasn't part of the packet. So with that in mind, Mr. Mullow, do you have any further comment?
Chairman Whitman, Commissioners, the only other thing that I have not mentioned, but since the issue seems to be four stories and height, maybe a little bit of the issue is also density. But I would point out that through a PAD, the property immediately adjacent to this, to Municipal Building Number Two, just to the east along Civic Center Drive and across from the Settlers Point Residential, was approved several years ago for five-story condominium buildings.
Five-story?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Sippel? Mike? Mr. Mullow?
Quick question. Yeah, so the four-story is what keeps coming up, and there is a considerable distance. We don't have any sort of line of sight for that, do we? And you showed the great line of sight piece for the two-story and for the three-story piece.
We do not have a line of sight, certainly not here this evening. There may have been one produced, but we do not have a line of sight from the four-story building, only because that's not the closest building. So we have the line of sight from the three-story, but not the four-story.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff on this side? None. Thank you, Mr. Mullow. Okay, with that, if there's nobody else here wishing to speak, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for discussion and possible motion. Anybody want to go first?
I'll go first, Chairman.
Vice Chairman Peterson?
This case, the original ordinance in July of 2000, was my very first night on the Planning Commission, sitting on this dais. I was an alternate, and it was my very first big case that night. So I can't help but remember all of the details. And like Mr. Carpenter referred to, we were given grandiose ideas and plans of what 555 promised this development to turn into, how they expected it to be. It was called a parade route down the main drive into Gilbert Town Square, and it was going to connect from Civic Center Drive over, and it was amazing. There was huge signage that ended up not being developed, that was voted down over time, with a big digital reader that Town Council couldn't foresee sitting there. It's a lot smaller than it was projected to be in the original ordinance. And like all of the residents in Raven Ranch, they hoped for that. They hoped for that to happen. It was amazing. And then we watched 555 also developing Dana Park at the same time, but it has a major freeway that they abut, and it has grown and progressed and even probably gathered the businesses that we wanted here at Gilbert Town Square. No doubt. I've watched my daughter work at Brunswick for almost five years, which is one of the closer buildings to Gilbert Road, and have people come in and say, how long have you been here? I didn't even know Brunswick was here. And really, you can't miss that building. It's huge, it's all lit up at night. And people say they've lived here for years, they've driven down Gilbert Road, they didn't even know Brunswick was in there, it had been there since 2007. I'm surprised personally that the movie theater has lasted. It was the first business that went in there. It's so tucked back into the corner. It's changed hands over years, it has a different name. It's been 13 years now, and I'm really amazed. I have watched businesses go in, businesses go out. I've had a hairdresser in there that's gone out and moved someplace else because the business wasn't good enough. We've watched the businesses right here on Gilbert Road open and close, as staff referred to. And we've heard projects come in and say that they wanted to go in there and would it fit? Would a Walmart fit in there? My personal opinion, no. Would I have approved that as a planning commissioner? I don't think so. It only met, it only went to pre-app, we never saw it here on the dais. What would work in this location, under these circumstances, not even talking about or taking into account the tank that the economy went into for the past few years? What would work in this circumstance to bring people into this development that is so tucked into that corner that will have the best impact on the surrounding area, being Gilbert Town Square, and provide a different kind of residential use for this town? And I know how much people oppose multifamily. It always seems to be a hot button. We referred to this last month also. What would fit both of those things? What would bring a high-level multifamily, if these buildings are going to have elevators in them, you're talking nice apartments. We're not talking average apartments. This builder has done everything that they can to build it to a point where they can provide the best product, bring the most apartments in that they can under the density, maybe not even as many as the density would allow, and also build it so that it doesn't have such a bad impact on the residents next door. If the commercial went in there, residents in Raven Ranch would not be happy. 15 feet from a two-story commercial building would not be how you would want to live, even if that commercial building got moved forward and the loading docks were back there and there were trucks going in and out of there all the time. I think that, I think this will have a whole lot less impact on you. We're talking a gated neighborhood, which I'm not always keen on gated, but in this case, I think the product calls for it. And I think that the two-story closest to the residents, moving the four-stories closest to the road, it gives the same balance that the whole shopping center already has. And I think it's appropriate. And I know the neighbors aren't going to be happy with that, but I think, under these circumstances, that you are getting an appropriate neighbor for what you have and not have a field there any longer, as it was referred to in one of the letters that I just read. That's my two cents, or five, or 10 cents.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bianchi?
You know, we went through the exercise with the general plan a couple of years ago. This parcel was a topic of discussion, and we were looking at infill possibilities and what would really work. And I know amongst our Subcommittee for Land Use, some sort of product similar to what was proposed here was brought up for conversation. Given the limited commercial frontage that the site had, we don't know with the viability of that, and that's probably why it's still vacant. As far as the concerns that were shared, you know, in the letters and tonight, you know, we shared similar concerns during study session. I think the applicant has addressed pretty much everyone that we brought up when this was presented to us for the first time. The other thing, as far as density versus three versus four stories, I look at where we're at, I think the range is between 14 to 25. This is right at that mid-range, even with that four-story. So as Mr. Bull said, we could have gone higher, and if you go much lower, then I'm sure you're at the bottom end of that, and that's why I talked about what's the next lowest density after that multifamily. But even as it is, we're still at that mid-range for density as well. And I do agree with staff, when we get into the situation of talking about mixed uses and what that focus is going to be, you know, when you have that retail component, I think with the pedestrian amenities, I think this would certainly complement Town Square. And one of the comments that was brought up was, you know, 307 units or whatever it was, it may not be a savior to a lot of those businesses, but I think it's certainly going to help. So I think in that regard, I think it helps complement Town Square. It kind of gets us closer to that mixed-use focus, and I think the applicant has met a lot of our concerns. So with that, I'm actually in favor of this case.
Thank you. Commissioner Ayler?
Kind of looking at the design side, and kind of looking at the three-story, the four-story and view angles in comparison to what it would be. And the step-back of the four stories are, I don't know if I'd reference a football field, but it is definitely pulled back away from the neighborhood. And with the double tree line that's proposing, it's going to be, are you going to see the rooftops, maybe, but you also have to look at, you're looking at the height of the building as the top of the roof. Someone sitting on that balcony is another three or four feet below that, so you're not actually looking, someone's not looking at you from that point, they're looking at you from another, if possible, is from four or five feet lower, or three or four feet lower. And I lost my iPad there for a second with my notes on it. But I think the two-story and what the developer's been working with in trying to have a step-back from the single-family is working well. I think that with the design elements of the building, having a four-story into this product, if it was any closer, I would start to have an issue with it. And then the idea of residential in this neighborhood, I really believe 307 units will revitalize this development. I mean, that impact on this development will be a huge for Mike's, for Buffalo Wild Wings, for the new sushi place, for all those guys that have that extra amount of people that live there, that have potential to work there, because it's all work-live in that area. It is a lot more effect than you really believe. So in that, I would support this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Fuller?
Ready for motion, or?
What?
Anybody else have any? I would echo what Bridget thought. I think what Bridget said eloquently reflected my feelings, so.
Commissioner Steiger?
I always ask myself, based on the information provided, is the proposed change to the general plan good for Gilbert? And I think even some of the residents have recognized that the current land use and zoning is not good for Gilbert, nor good for this property. It's unfortunate, I'm no fan of a four-story apartment complex for some very personal reasons, but I do believe that when it comes to what's, what the impact of this on the property and on Gilbert is, and the fact that this is in the arena of land use and zoning, the coveted multi-use, where you put residential so close to commercial and business and office, I think this is an excellent opportunity, and I support it, even though I'd like to see some way to satisfy the residents' desire not to have a four-story building 300 and some feet away.
Thank you. Since Commissioner Sippel doesn't have any comments, I feel much the same way that Vice Chairman Peterson and some of my other commissioners feel. I, this particular parcel is a very tough parcel, I think, based on its location and the design and the depth of the property. It has no visibility to, little to no visibility, basically, to Gilbert Road. Unless you're on the parcel itself or familiar with the area, you don't know that it's there. And I think, over the years, watching this center, the center has really struggled. It's struggled to stay alive. Many of the users in it sadly can't stay alive because the foot traffic isn't there. The overall The overall traffic isn't there, and I think that that is unfortunate, because I think a lot of those uses in there are great. When I think of multifamily, multifamily, like Vice Chairman Peterson mentioned, does happen to be a hot button for a lot of people. And it's a, it's a hot topic, and you either love it or you hate it. And so it's very tough to find just the right parcels for multifamily in the town of Gilbert. And those that can be placed in such a way that they, they provide enough buffer to adjacent residences. And, and this particular instance, I think this parcel does just that. It's separated by canal with additional landscaping and tracks. I think the, it appears as though the developer has really tried to meet with the neighbors and has tried to meet and address many of their concerns, albeit not all of them, obviously, because you are here, most of you are here tonight. But it seems like the, they've reduced the heights of certain buildings, they've relocated buildings, and they've tried to do as much as they can to not only meet some of the neighbors' desires, but also staff's desires, and also make sure that the project stays feasible. So for those reasons, I would be in support of this request. Chairman Fuller?
Chairman?
Oh, sorry. I'm so, I'm so used to calling you Chairman Fuller, I don't, Commissioner Fuller.
Okay. I imagine we'll do two separate motions on this, is that accurate?
Correct.
Moved to recommend to the Town Council approval of GP 12-08, a minor general plan amendment?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Fuller, a second by Vice Chairman Peterson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Okay. For the reasons set forth in the staff report, moved to recommend approval to the Town Council for Z 12-22. As requested, substitute the conditions listed in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Fuller, a second by Vice Chairman Peterson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And again, this is just our recommendation, it'll be heard by the Town Council probably in about a month, I'm not sure the specific date. Okay. Okay, moving on, we'll actually backtrack a little bit to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is Z 12-26. It's a request to amend ordinances 1921-79, 2195, 2304, and 2413, which are basically just zoning cases that have been approved previously, to rezone approximately 35 acres of real property generally located north of the northeast corner of Recker and Williamsville Roads and the Cooley Station PAD, Parcels 12 and 13, from approximately 14 acres of single-family detached and 21 acres of multifamily low zoning district, all with the planned area development overlay, to approximately eight acres of multifamily medium and 28 acres of single-family detached, all with the planned area development overlay. Which, I'll kind of skip through this. The PAD requests a reduced rear setback and separation between buildings for the multifamily medium parcel and retain the existing conditions of development for the single-family detached zoning districts. And with that, we'll welcome Ms. Maria Caravine. And we'll excuse Commissioner Fuller, who had to leave early this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Sorry for being delayed, but I, it favored me because I get inspired by Mike's presentations and all the public input following. So, the Commission saw this review, this application at the last meeting, and they had several questions that staff have tried to answer in the report. There is pages, several pages that address the questions that staff, that the Commission had, and I will go over those. The first slide that you have on the, it gives you a background. We have the framed area by that thick white line, is the entire gateway character area, which is approximately eight square miles. With the blue arrow, I try to identify the 35 acres that constitute the request for the rezoning in two different parcels, Parcel 12 to the east of the entire 35 and Parcel 13 on the corner. Let me go back. This slide shows the current land use map and identifies more, in more detail, what constitutes Parcel 13 of the project and what is the Parcel 12 that it is right now, residential 8 to 14. The multifamily on the very corner, 14 to 25, and the Village Center to the south across the street in which the gen, for which the general plan states that we should promote densities from 22 to 50 dwelling units per acre and maintain an FAR, which is the floor area ratio of .10 in the early phases of development while at build-out a minimum of .75. So that is high, but I mean, in the concept that it was worked out in 2001, when this character area was incorporated into the general plan, this is the way the council incentivized the development community to achieve the objectives of the area. Now we're going to the specifics. On top, on the, in the top portion of the slide, we have the existing zoning, and that is the layout of the different, the two parcels. Right now, this skinny parcel to, abiding the Willows is Parcel 12 with single-family, 13.5 acres roughly. And to, immediately to the south and fronting the Cooley Loop North, we have Parcel 21.2 acres with the multifamily low. So right now, we have a zoning in place that is not in conformance with the general plan. The bottom of the slide shows the proposal for Parcsels 12 to the east, 13 on the corner, that will conform to the general plan. Why this happened, maybe in many of the amendments to this Cooley Station, there was a housing product or something that triggered this rezoning or change in the boundaries, and we have done, at least since the adoption of the Land Development Code in 2005, two or three picking up technical revisions that we needed to do to the, to the zoning code, might have been that. I do not, couldn't find why. Anyways, we, there was a question at the study session that asked, how many dwelling units will be developed now versus what the applicant proposes? So the scenario on top shows a total of 486, if those acreages with those designations get developed at the maximum density of that range, that is 14 dwelling units per acre. On the bottom, we have the number of units based on the proposal we have on the table, and those are 112 units for Parcel 13, that roughly it comes out at 14.2, and the larger piece, Parcel 12, with the single-family detached product with 216 units. I will pause at this time, this is the background. The request that we have is a rezoning with two parts to it. One is to change the zoning districts to conform to the general plan with the layout that you see on the screen. And the second part of the rezoning is to deviate the, the development standards for the smaller Parcel 13 to the rear and in-between buildings. And we'll see that why in the following slides. The next slide shows how these two parcels with the rezoning requested will integrate into the development plan. This will be one of the exhibits to be adopted with the ordinance when the council sees it, showing what is existing to the north, which is the Willows, that is also part of the gateway area with very specific characteristics, and what it is expected of the Village Center with these public open space, green public parks. And the latest, a project that was approved by the Town Council on Parcel 16, the school. Then we go to the zoning exhibit. This is the way it should read in the, in the, in the ordinance with the layout of the, of the parcels, with the zoning designation districts that they propose. On this exhibit will have a, the open space system, the way it will, it is configured, what is expected at the center, the public open spaces, what the school provided, what the, this development is proposing, in all cases connecting with what is there and what is the future open space system. This one is a more specific, we have Parcsels 13 to the very corner, Parcel 12 with a very, very well-defined lots distribution and layout. The houses or the lots that will be fronting onto Cooley Station North will be accessing and will be facing the street. This exhibit is an actual product built by the same builder, under a different name, in the Cooley Station, Cooley Station North. So this is actual housing product that we have in Gilbert, and it was also developed at the same density. Looking to the street, pedestrian access, no garages, visibility from the street at 14 dwelling units per acre. Those are the actual houses built, the neo-tradition features of the streets, rectilinear, tree-planted between the curb and the sidewalks, access directly to the houses from the street, the front packet of landscape to be installed by the developer, maintained by the HOA, so it will be manicured all the time. Another view of the same product. And this is Parcel 13. And Parcel 13, this is a very crude conceptual plot-plan of what the applicant is bringing, just to ensure that he's refining a concept that will yield 14 dwelling units per acres. These are not apartments. These will be four-plexes in three stories with, for sale. And what you see in each one of these envelopes, these four spaces are the garages. The units occupy this portion, they have pedestrian connection connecting them. The deviations requested are 20 to the rear instead of the 30 that the multifamily medium asks when backing onto residential, in this case, the Willows. And they want also to have a 10-feet separation instead of 20. I had to highlight in red what is the actual distance, and the applicant states that, or the owner of the project states, that these boxes here are in elevator shafts that, and to be on the safe side if requesting the 10 feet instead of the 15 or 16 or, or 14. So with that, I complete my presentation. I'll be happy to answer. We included in the report all the information and responses to the questions that the Commission had at the study session in terms of how much multifamily there is in the Cooley Station, which is pretty much a little over 30% of the single-family detached or the single-family acreage already zoned. We expect now with the turn of the economy that we're going to be seeing quite a bit of activity in this area. We hope that the original concept that the landowners brought to the town in 2000 and then adopted in 2001 in the general plan is maintained.
Thank you, Maria. Is there any questions for staff? Commissioner Ayler?
Yeah, I had a question on one of your slides. You, you showed the comparison of the unit counts from what is to what isn't, or what they're asking for. And, yeah, that one. So my question on the multifamily low to medium, you're holding both of them at 14 dwelling units per acre. So my question is, is are they holding the 14 units per acre?
Okay.
Because that's the unit count you're giving us.
Okay, yes. This is if in the current zoning designations, if the two parcels with the acreage distribution are developed at the maximum of 14 dwelling units per acre, which is the range for multifamily low and single-family detached.
Right.
If you go to our general plan. So, the 13.5 times 14 plus the 21.2 times 14 gives us this for 86.
Right, but you're showing Parcel 13 proposed at the minimum, you're showing the maximum on the top.
Well, because these are the densities that are on the table with a specific plans.
Right.
It could be developed with something else, but the applicant has presented us, we could do the calculation that way. Let's say 25 dwelling units per acre for the eight acres, and for the other, 8 to 14 at 14. But the, we have also a plan that is ready to come to build the housing product that we illustrate in the slides later. The applicant is here to build that product.
Right. So my question is, is are we holding to 14 units if we were looking at this? So the, the maximum on Parcel 13 proposed, they would be wanting to only build 112 units?
Correct.
And so that would be what we would?
In fact, in fact, the staff had involved on Page 9 in the table, and that was the reason for the revision, that if Parcel 13 gets developed up to 15 dwelling units per acre, staff supports the two deviations of the multifamily medium. If, for some reason, this project at this density fails, for whatever reason, and an apartment complex come, we feel that the LDC standard should be maintained.
Okay. So it's 15 units per acre, not 14?
Up to.
Up to.
It could be, I mean, we want to give him a margin of, they're refining this concept that 212 units on the corner parcel will yield 14.2 dwelling units per acre.
Thank you, Chairman. Maria, on the overview in, in our packet, there's a reference to the general plan, talking about densities ranging from 22 to 50 dwelling units per acre encouraged. And there's a term I haven't seen before, and I couldn't find an explanation, and a floor area ratio of .10 at early phases and .75 at build-out is required. I wonder if you could explain a floor area ratio and how that changes so much?
Okay. The .10 is a very low ratio of the floor area of the building on the lot. A .75 is quite a bit of floor to the land. For example, a .5 ratio will be occupying only half of the lot with the footprint of the building. A .75 will allow 2/3 of occupancy of that lot. That is a measure for the amassing, the intensity of the verticality of a building, and how much it occupies on the, on the lot. This, I included that information because that constituted a major general plan amendment in 2004. We changed the layout of the Village Center from the original shape to the horizontal layout with a loop street going around, and stated, we need your help to make this work. Give us a low floor area ratio at the beginning, but we promise you that at build-out, the Village Center will look like a Village Center where up to 50 dwelling units per acre will be permitted to, to, to see the, to, to live and, and achieve the vibrancy, the, the density, the livelihood, and the mixed use that this character area, Village Core, is identified for.
So I understand what lot coverage is, and it's the percent of, of the lot, the individual lot, that the dwelling unit occupies. So that's defined by the lot. What is the total area? What is the total area that is encompassed with a floor area ratio? Is it every single acre? Is it the entire parcel?
It's the area of the lot. To be easy in the explanation, a .5 of a lot will require the building to be a two-story building. And correct me if I'm wrong, the planners on the [inaudible]. Mike, who deals with these concepts, will come and help me with the explanation.
I'd like to just make a real quick point here. The floor area ratio only is a requirement, a development regulation in the Gilbert, or rather, in the Gateway Village Center and the Gateway Business Center, which is not this parcel. It's the tan in the middle, which is the Village Center, and then the little blue Y. So the floor area ratio only applies to those land use categories, not this project, which is residential.
I thought she said it was. I thought Maria just said it was.
Thank you.
Chairman Whitman, Commissioner Steiger, just to answer your question on the floor area ratio, it's usually best described with a diagram or a graphic, but it's the ratio of the square footage, the gross square footage of a building to the net area of the lot. So if you covered an entire lot, a net lot area, with a one-story building, your floor area would be one. You could also achieve a floor area ratio of one, which is relatively high, by having a four-story building on a quarter of the lot. Okay?
I think that just raised some additional questions for us as commissioners. So the floor area ratio that you're talking about in this exhibit that's required or it needs to be maintained, did Planner Edwards just say that it doesn't apply to this specific property? It only applies to the tan property in the area in blue?
That, correct. These FARs range at the beginning and at built-out applies only to the Village Center, which is the core, which implies high-density occupancy to the maximum of the lot area with high densities. And what I was trying to demonstrate or illustrate with this exhibit was the location of the parcels, the densities, and the densities right across the street that are recommended in the general plan. So we're going from a 14, eight to 14, to a 14, which could go up to 25, and across the street someday, if not change, up to 50 dwelling units per acre. So.
I guess I have a further question. It looks like some other commissioners have some questions, too. Is there a specific plan or requirement that requires this particular parcel to maintain a certain density?
What you see on the screen is what is the designation as we speak. Eight to 14 for what is now parcel 12, and 14 to 25 for what the corner parcel identified in the proposal as parcel 13. This is what the general plan right now calls for. The rezoning will conform to this land use classifications illustrated on the screen.
Commissioner Sippel, or Steiger, Ayler, somebody. Everybody had their hands raised.
Peterson, right?
Sorry, Commissioner Ayler.
Back to parcel 13. And so, just so I understand, if we, they're up to 15 right now, and that's what they're proposing, so they would have to come back for a change if they wanted to go past 15?
No, they will have to comply with the code, Land Development Code standards for multifamily median, and what the ordinance for Cooley Station says for the multifamily median.
So we are, in essence, looking at it from 14 to 25, not to 15? Okay.
Is there any stipulation that requires them to maintain a certain density based on what they've proposed with their plan?
The development exhibits with the lot numbers and what you saw in these exhibits will be adopted with the ordinance. This one with the number of lots, this one with the zoning designations, dimensions, and acreage, this one with the open space location and maintenance requirements. The conditions that staff included in the report are mainly to respond to engineering making sure that these two parcels comply with all the development agreement requirements, connections, dedications, and installation of improvements, and timely for those, just to make sure. When these 500 acres were rezoned, it was very general. Now that we're seeing specific projects, we're going to the details of dedications and completion of improvements. And that's what is reflected in the conditions in the report.
I have one other question in looking at this exhibit to that plat. In the multifamily, you show a green open space, but in that last idea plat, I know it wasn't, just to show concept, there was no open space, I don't believe, not that one, over in the 13, the little green one in parcel 13, right?
Parcel 13 will have to comply with the open space percentage in the ordinance, which is 35% of the net acreage of the parcel. They are giving a break from code in the ordinance because proximity to the green common area of the Cooley Station, as you see here, and so all those green frontages, connections, passive and active open space is given credit for parcel 13. So when they come refine their project, and we have specifics, the open space plan and the site plan and elevations will be reviewed under the light of the ordinance in place, and the latest one for Cooley Station, and any deviations that council may approve with this request, which is the only two distances deviations, 20 to the rear of the parcel and 10 instead of 20 between buildings.
Okay. So the open space marked on there is just for idea, it's not actually really there?
It is not to the scale, but it's a concept of the connectivity and placement and distances and placement to the main core elements of the open space system in the Cooley Station.
Can you show that concept plat that you had?
Sure.
No, of the multifamily? No, of the parcel 13? I understand this one.
Let me see.
I think it was towards the end.
The last, I think is the last one.
There you go.
Right there. So open space will have to comply with ordinance requirements along the street frontage, and it will be more than this.
Okay.
All these will be open space with houses very close to the sidewalks. They will have, come in a pool, an additional green active and passive areas, and it's not a good depiction. It's a conceptual plot plan that we ask staff to be able to explain to you that we were not recommending or supporting deviations when we didn't have something in the works.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have questions? Sorry, I thought you had some. Anybody else? Commissioner Bianchi?
No, I'm just trying to make sense of the lengthy description of the zoning request. So if we can summarize it. So Maria, you said the largest component to this is really, this zoning request is just to bring this into the general plan.
Correct. That is the first element of the rezoning, conform to the general plan boundaries and densities. And the second part of the rezoning is the deviation of these two items, rear to single-family residential and separation between buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we have any further questions from Maria. Thank you. Go ahead and invite the applicant up if you can give your name and city of residence. That would be great.
Which one is the Elmo? Mike, which one is the button for the Elmo?
Powerpoint to Elmo?
Computer camera?
Yeah, just the camera.
Yeah.
There we go.
There we go.
We're in business.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Stephen Earl. My city of residence is currently Timpe, but by June 1st, I'll be a resident of Gilbert.
Yay, for Gilbert.
Zoning council, thank you. I'm here tonight as zoning council for Ryland Homes, who is the applicant here. I put on the overhead Elmo system, the Cooley Center, Village Center, and the parcels in question that we're dealing with, 12 and 13, might be a little bit confusing, but it is this parcel just on the north side of the Village Center. And when Maria, and by the way, I want to thank Maria for the thorough staff report and presentation. We are dealing only with the zoning tonight, not the plat, which I guess will come to you in a couple of weeks. And it is rather simple. What we are trying to do is bring parcels 12 and 13 into compliance with the general plan and the original concept for the town center, which had this parcel as a part of it, just on the north side, not in the town center. So in a way, we're correcting some zoning category that was created along the way that's kind of hard to describe what happened and how it happened, but we're bringing it back to the general plan designation. There is eight acres now that would be multifamily median. Before, it had more acreage of multifamily low, and it had less acreage of single-family detached, and we're adding more acreage. But when you do all the density calculations, we end up at about the same point with two projects that we think can work well. And this shows the differentiation between the single-family portion and the multifamily. This is a visual depiction utilized by Cooley Station owners to show the Village Center. When Maria speaks about FARs in the .75 range and density at 20 to 50, obviously, that's a very dense town center. And what it means is you have to go up in height. The higher the FAR, the more height you have, generally speaking. And so obviously, it's intended that we'd have commercial buildings with residential over the top of them in a neo-traditional kind of styling, along with a lot of open spaces. And this was the original layout for the property we're talking about now. The layout that we're proposing, although we'll come back to you on the actual preliminary plat, has units facing Cooley Station Loop Road North. So right across the street from these units that would be facing the street is the new town Village Center that would be here. And then these units would have their garages in the back, and we're talking about having garages that would have driveways that would allow visitor parking on those driveways. So sometimes you've seen units that have a garage in the back, and then there's actually no apron at all. These will actually have an apron of 18 feet in depth in order for cars to park, not only in the garage, but visitors to park behind the garage doors. And that's here. You also might wonder, well, how are you going to have a garage door on one side of the street and single-family that fronts on the other side? And of course, these are designed as neo-traditional units that have the back look almost as good as the front, with a lot of architectural styling, front and back, so four-sided architecture. And then the units, the other kinds of units that we're talking about, and we're sort of showing these units here, are units that have, these are the frontal units, but the units back in here will be units that have the garage on the front, and I think we've provided exhibits for that, and I have them with me tonight if you'd like to see them. What's not shown here is the piece for multifamily M, which is the eight acres, and that's here. This is an exhibit that we put together today just to show the relationship of the proposed units. And again, as Maria has indicated, this is conceptual, so we'll be back with an actual design review proposal. But it shows the relationship of the units along the north side. We are asking for a deviation in order to achieve 14 units per acre, because these are four-plexes. They're designed, and we've got the layouts on the bottom here to show that these units, these condominium units, go from a, the smallest one is about 1,500 to 1,600 square feet, and the larger one, the penthouse at the third level, is well over 3,000 square feet. And the ones on the second level are divided between ones that are about 1,600 square feet and go up to 22. So these are not small units, and they're also designed that that third level has the opportunity for a elevator. By putting the elevator to that third unit, kind of a European-style elevator, if we understand the difference there, they're not huge elevators, but they are personal elevators that take up one or two people and the goods that they're taking upstairs. All of these units would have two-car garages inside the first level. And then they would have either direct access into their unit, the first level, one flight up to the second level, two flights up to the penthouse, but they also have an elevator to that same third level. That's the concept. And so when you pack those in as four-plexes, having the appropriate open space, and the open space, I think, was asked earlier in the evening, right now, we're showing it kind of on the east side. An earlier version showed it in the middle. That's the confusion between where we were showing it. But we have asked for two deviations. One is along the north side, adjacent to the Willows. And we use this aerial photograph, I'll bring it down a little bit, in order to show that we really are adjacent to six homes in the Willows. They have setbacks ranging from 12 to about 20 feet, depending upon which unit it is. Our minimum setback would be 20. And we would be putting in a row of trees along the 10 feet, adjacent to our common wall. The reason we put in the landscaping is both for their benefit as well as for ours, because we want our third-level units and second-level units to be having a view beyond what's immediately adjacent them to the mountains in the distance. So by having trees that kind of separate the two units, but our minimum setback, even with the deviation, would be the maximum setback in the Willows, adjacent to us, and about five or six of the units would have open space as the closest neighbor. The other deviation was between units, and that's really because of, one, to give us a little flexibility in architectural detailing, the pop-outs that come outside the building line, as well as the elevators themselves. And so we asked for a reduction up to 10 feet so that we could have those projections without, you know, running afoul of ordinance standards. That's the basic essence of this case, is to increase the amount of single-family detached a little bit and to reduce the amount of multifamily L or lower to eight acres of multifamily median to achieve the same intensity that was desired here across the street from the Village Center. I'd be glad to respond to any questions, and I would tell you that Reed Porter, the president of Ryland Homes, is here with me. They have a long history, as both Ryland and Trend, of building these neo-traditional units, both in the Cooley Town Station North as well as elsewhere in the valley.
Great, thank you, Mr. Earl. Any questions from Mr. Earl? Commissioner Steiger?
Mr. Earl, I understood you to say that the multifamily units, a single unit, would have four different occupants, not occup, yeah, four different families could live there, four different individuals?
Four different units inside each building. That's why we're calling them four-plexes, that one building has four units.
And out of those four units, there's parking for?
Each one, two cars for each one.
Two cars for each unit?
With each unit.
Okay, for a total of eight cars, so there isn't any, okay, that answers that question.
And we do have visitor parking. We're showing visitor parking, and so we meet the code requirements for visitor parking onsite.
Okay. Thank you for explaining the rationale behind why you wanted the deviations. That was one of the first, that was one of the things I wasn't clear on. I appreciate that. Good job.
Any additional questions for Mr. Earl? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, go ahead and open the public hearing up. Is there? Is there, I don't, do we have cards to speak on this? Is there anybody here wishing to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none. I'm assuming that since there wasn't anybody here to speak on that, that Mr. Earl doesn't want to give a rebuttal. Staff, do you have anything further to add?
The staff supports the project. We'll be bringing back to you the more, very good-looking exhibits for the plats with the color details, some landscaping, the theming, and percentages, and all that, which is part of the plat for next month. They were technical requirements, and they agreed to, because it doesn't really delay them. They're going to go to council on the first week in May.
Great, thank you. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the dais and close the public hearing. Does anybody want to lead us off in discussion, comment, possible motion?
I'll?
Commissioner Steiger? Oh, sorry.
Well, I think one of the key elements here is that the proposed change, changes for zoning and land use put this in compliance with the general plan. And when you look at the, the special use area here, I'm having a senior moment on the, the special area here, it is just totally in sync with it. So, I have had my concerns addressed, and I understand the viability of it, and I think this definitely passes the good-for-Gilbert test, so I'm in support of it.
Vice Chairman Peterson?
Chairman, I was ready to make a motion unless there's other discussion. No? Okay. Then I will go ahead and make the motion that for the reasons set forth in the staff report that was presented to us on the dais this evening, move to recommend approval to the town council for Z12-26 as requested, subject to the conditions listed, and again, the staff report that was given to us this evening.
I don't think there are any conditions revised in that report, right?
Not at all. It was like a systematic revision up to 15 instead of approximately 14 dollars per acre prior.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chairman Peterson, a second by Commissioner Bianchi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Well, six to zero. Sure, it's been proposed that we take a short recess for five minutes before we regroup on the next item. Go ahead and do so. All right, we'll go ahead and proceed with the, with the meeting, call it back to order. We're now at agenda item number 13 and 14, the companion general plan and zoning cases, so we'll go ahead and discuss them together, but take separate motions, obviously, on them. It's case GP 1302, which is the minor general plan amendment to change the land use classification of approximately 58.8 acres of real property generally located east of the northeast corner of Alvesta Drive and Riggs Road at Adora Boulevard from residential 0 to 1, land use classification to residential 1 to 2. And for the zoning case, Z1303, rezone approximately 58.8 acres of real property generally located east of the northeast corner of Alvesta Road, or Alvesta Drive and Riggs Road at Adora Boulevard from single-family SF 35 with a planned area development overlay to single-family SF 10, zoning district with planned area development overlay. And to modify conditions of development as follows, one, to increase the minimum lot area to 11,800 square feet; number two, increase the minimum lot depth to 135 feet; and three, reduce the required side yard setback from 10 feet per side to 5 feet with a minimum of 15 feet total and a 7 and 1/2 foot if the lot's sides on a street. With that, we'll go ahead and welcome Mr. Al Ward.
Chairman Whitman and members of the planning commission, thank you. I just want to mention that a couple of those deviations were part of the original plan. They've subsequently been modified through the plan review process. This is a site shown here, as you mentioned, it's known as Riggs Road and Adora Trails, Adora Boulevard, I beg your pardon, this is a former Maricopa County flood control property that was deemed a surplus land, and it was spun off and acquired in proposal for residential development. Immediately on the east side of the subject site, you can see Greenfield Acres, which are 35,000-plus square foot lots, and to the north is Greenfield Glen, which is one acre-plus properties. Immediately to the south, Adora Trails, to the west, the floodway, and then further west of that, I believe that's referred to as the Zinke property. Little bit closer in, as you had mentioned, 58.8 acres gross. Again, there's the two immediate adjacent subdivisions, Greenfield Glen to the north and Greenfield Acres 3 to the east. This gives you a little bit of the general plan overall context. I was just reading through the sand tan character area, and it says, really, a large proportion of the 10,000-acre sand tan character area, 16 square mile, or 22% of the town of Gilbert, is either SF, not SF, excuse me, residential density of 0 to 1, or residential density of 2 to 3.5, a very large proportion of it. And this map really shows that. To the north and east of the site is 0 to 1, further to the east of that is 2 to 3.5, south is 2 to 3.5. Zinke ultimately is 2 to 3.5, and then to the southwest of the subject area, again, back to 0 to 1. This is the area, shown in blue. Proposal is to amend the general plan to go from 0 to 1 residential dwelling units per acre to 1 to 2. The zoning map, the request is to go to SF 10, single-family 10, and immediately to the east, SF 35 to the north, 43. I mentioned those two subdivisions, and then to the south is Adora Trails. This is the proposed plat. 117 lots, dwelling density of 1.99. Overall open space would be 21.5% or 12.6 acres. General plan exhibit shown in the hatched area. Again, they're looking for a residential density of 1 to 2 dwelling units an acre. From a zoning exhibit, it's going from SF 35, as the request, down to SF 10 with a PAD development overlay, planned area development overlay. The neighborhood has provided significant concerns, have expressed significant concerns. The two large lot residential areas, Greenfield Glen and Greenfield Acres 3, have said that they'd like to see a similar density of lot sizes as they have, something along those lines of a 3/4 acre to a 1 acre lot, possibly maybe going down to a half acre lot, but certainly not the size of the lots being proposed. They say there's a poor transitioning, they'd like to see more buffer, they've got some concerns about traffic. They also cite the sand tan character area, which essentially provides for large lot, rural residential lots, and they'd like to see this area maintained as estate-type of lots, not, not as what's being shown on this particular proposal. And essentially, there's a general conflict, or a feeling of conflict, with the lifestyles. These are not really considered to be larger lots as envisioned in the sand tan. Again, I think the overall summary, we've sort of explained it. The request is to go to 1 to 2 dwelling units an acre, from 0 to 1, from SF 35 to SF 10 with a PAD. There is a single development, amended development standard. Previous deviation that was discussed at study session on March 6th has been eliminated now. Now, that single deviation is to increase the minimum parcel size on this property to 13,000 square foot. And again, there is a development plan for the overall area, which will maintain lots at 117 and the current density, or the proposed density of approximately 2. Internal private streets. There's also a 50-foot buffering provided with the current plan along the east, north, and south sides. I pretty much just explained this, Greenfield Glen to the north. There are lots along the perimeter of the subject property are 1.1 acres. Greenfield Acres along the immediate perimeter of the subject property, .86 acres, I think that's 37,000 square feet. The perimeter buffers proposed, you can see them kind of with this plan in the green belt, would be on the south 50, on the north 73, and on the east 54, minimum, with up to about 110 feet on the, on that same east side, depending on where the lots fall into place. Here's the development plan officially, a little bit more, since this will be coming back for a plat, what's officially going with the zoning case is this. Little bit more conceptual, doesn't have too many of the details. They'll be worked out, there might be some minor modifications through the process, just to leave it a little bit more general. So, that's what's considered as the development plan, still relatively specific. I just wanted to show you the sand tan character area. As I mentioned, 10,300 acres, 16 square miles, contains the bottom, 22% of the town of Gilbert, 72.6 square miles. It's here. The red parcels, we just happened to get some information on this recently. The red parcels are parcels within the town of Gilbert and the sand tan character area, representing 35,000 square feet to 1.25 acres, generally 1 acre parcel. So, you can see them spread throughout the municipality. 4,300 parcels in municipality total. Sand tan character area comprises approximately 40% of all the 1 acre parcels, being 1,725 parcels. Just as a little bit of background there. Specifically with regard to the sand tan character area in which this property is located, the intent is to promote a quality neighborhood, maintain existing low-density housing, while also allowing a mix of quality suburban neighborhoods and open spaces. Of course, the low-density type of lifestyle is encouraged, try to maintain and enhance the the Santan character area's tradition of an agrarian theme, wherever there are one acre properties being proposed with denser areas adjacent to them, they would like to provide for some type of buffering, some type of transition, some type of similar type of lot sizes, abiding those compared to what would be next door. Again, I kind of gave you an overview, the majority of the Santan character area is one dwelling unit an acre, or two to 3.5 dwelling, not too much in between. The design criteria, again, coming right out of the Santan character area, provide open spaces, continuity focal point, and as a buffer for adjacent large lots with similar lot sizes. I know this will be discussed tonight, so I want to just go over this again, I paraphrased it a little bit, but I tried to be true to the intent. The design criteria for residential areas in the Santan character area is to provide open spaces as, as community focal points and as buffers for adjacent large lots with similar lot sizes, that's exactly what it says. Peripheral lots adjacent to one acres, one acre plus lots, are to buffer these large lots with subdivision design including, so this says, including these different types of buffering, transitions, open space areas, separation with a street, and lot sizes similar to the adjacent lots. So, my understanding is these are the variety of ways, you can have the similar lot sizes stepping down, you could provide adjoining open spaces or local streets. New lots are not required, it specifies that quite clearly in the plan, in the Santan character area, the new lots are not required to be one acre or larger. So, I tried to give an overview of the project, give an overview of the Santan character area, give an overview of the concerns expressed by neighbors on the larger lots, with that staff is recommending approval this, subject to the conditions and the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward, are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Sipple?
Al, if you could just redefine for me, are they asking for 15-foot side yards, 10 and 5, or 7 and 1/2, and 7 and 1/2?
Chairman Whitman and Commissioner Sipple, no, that was something that was on the, at the study session, subsequent to the study session, the commission had recommended four different changes to the, to the lots, or gave them some suggestions along these lines. First would be to maybe increase the width of the lots, increase the size of the lots, thereby eliminating the need for the deviation for the amended development standard, and consider reducing the density, and they had done three of the four, the density remains as previously shown at 117 lots.
Okay.
Any further comments or questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ward, go ahead and invite the applicant up, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Can I shut this out? If you want to just work on top of it?
Good evening, Chairman Commission members, my name is Sean Lake, 1744 South Val Vista Drive, here on behalf of the property owners and Toll Brothers. With me here this evening is Mark Bailey, who's the executive vice president for Toll Brothers, and what I wanted to do is just give him a little bit at the, at the beginning to introduce himself, and also talk to a little, talk to you a little bit about Toll Brothers, who is bringing this proposal, who I represent, before the commission this evening. So, I'll turn it just a second over to Mark.
Hi, thank you, my name's Mark Bailey, I'm a resident of Phoenix. As Sean said, I'm an executive vice president for Toll Brothers, I thought it was appropriate to talk just a little bit about Toll Brothers and what we specialize in nationally and also locally. We were founded in 1967, we are a Fortune 1,000 company, at one time, we were a Fortune 500 company and hope to get there again. We specialize in luxury homes, we brand ourselves as America's luxury home builder. Nationally, our average sales price in 2008, and I apologize, I should update this, was $672,000 per home, that was over $200,000 higher than the next average builder, or the next builder average sales price. We're the only builder to win all three of the industry's coveted awards, America's Best Builder, National Builder of the Year, and the National Housing Quality Award, in fact, this year, we won the National Builder of the Year again for the second time. Here locally, we entered this market in 1995 with the purchase of Jeffrey Edmonds, Jeffrey Edmonds was a custom home builder that specialized mostly in North Scottsdale. Since entering the market, we've built over 5,000 homes in Arizona and completed over 24 communities. We actively build currently in Scottsdale, Phoenix, Litchfield, and we hope to be back into Gilbert soon, we recently finished up a project here that was very successful for us, and this project, we've been working on for quite some time, we think that it fits our bar, our market niche in the luxury executive-style housing, and we hope that you like it as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Commission members, again, it's really a pleasure to represent Toll. It's not often that you get to represent the, the top builder for executive-type homes, I mean, they really do an excellent job, I've watched them over the years build projects here in the valley, and it's really a pleasure to be part of their projects there. We've represented them before, and they're the type of projects that I go into after it's all said and done, and you look at it and you go, I'm proud of this project, I'm glad I was here, this is a great project, and it's, it's a project that I'm proud of year after year after year. The project that we're here to discuss this evening is a property located generally at Adora Boulevard and Riggs Road, many of you know it as the flood control property, because flood control, it was in the general plan for flood control property for years and years and years. Let's kind of walk through what, what that site is, but what we're proposing is an SF 10 PAD, and why a PAD? So, we can tie our development plan to the zoning. We're not here to bait and switch or play games with anybody, Toll is here to present a project and build the project, this is what they want to build. Now, you're probably going to notice that our site plan is slightly different than the one you received, that is because we had another neighborhood meeting on Thursday of last week, and in that neighborhood meeting, we received some more input from the neighbors, and we've made some modifications since then that I'll show, but in the, at the end with this new plan, 50%, 50% or 59 of the lots are 14,000 square feet and so on, but the smallest lot in the, in the project is 13,000 square feet, and the PAD has that in it. We're not asking for deviations, we're asking for more restrictions. The SF 10 says 10,000, but we're asking for the minimum lot size to be 13,000 square feet, but we would be tied to this, obviously. Now, let's walk through the site and kind of go over the history of where this site was and came from. Before you, is the 2001 general plan. Now, this is really the first general plan where the old, for those that remember the old Santan plan, back from 98, 99, and 2000, this was really the first time that was rolled in to the overall general plan. And you can see that the site that we're talking here about tonight is, is the flood control property. Now, around, what I want you to notice, around that site is medium density, two to 3.5, you've got the Zinke property, you've got Mountain Wood, which is now Adora Trails, all along here, and then all of this property is two to 3.5 in the 2001 general plan. Now, between 2001 and 2005, several changes, and before you hear this evening is the 2005 general plan, again, the site we're here talking about was designated public facilities institutional. And again, changes were made to this area, but again, the Zinke property and Mountain Wood, Adora Trails, and this whole area was all designated two to 3.5. Now, what happened in this space of 2001 to 2005, several things happened with this new plan that you'll notice on this new general plan. We made some changes, the developer of this property, Greenfield Acres, the residents that are here this evening, chose to develop their property less dense than what the general plan called for, and they have that absolute right to do that. They chose to develop at one unit to the acre, even though the general plan called for two to 3.5. There are some other things that happened on Riggs Road. You'll notice, and we were involved in this, there is a major power center, a Walmart Target-type shopping center that was approved for Higley and the Riggs Road, with more commercial on both sides, that was a big project, so this area in, with the 2005 general plan, was intended really for more urban-type, two to 3.5 and large retail commercial to occur along Riggs, Riggs Road. Now, why? Riggs Road is the road of regional significance, it is the major east-west carrier for traffic in this area, that's why we believe that happened. Now, sometime, like I said, between the 2005 and where we are today, this property, the general plan, I think that was just recent with the neighbors, after they developed, they chose, or they changed their general plan to zero to one, which is what it reflects today. Adora Trail stayed the same, they stayed the same, and sometime this, while it was owned by a government entity, this flood control property was changed to, from public facilities to zero to one. I talked to the county, I said, when did that happen, what happened, they didn't know, as I'm sure you can imagine, they're a big governmental entity, they get notices and they don't pay attention to them, but it currently resides today and sits at zero to one. What we are requesting is to change the designation to one to two, to allow the type of development, the high-end development that Toll Brothers wants to do here this evening. We think it's a good transitional, as you go from two to 3.5 with these properties, from Mountain Wood, if you remember, Mountain Wood used to have an apartment site right here, but it transitions into, from one to two, over to zero-one, then back to two to 3.5. And we think we have presented a plan that is a good transition, but also protects the existing rural residential in the area. Now, you're probably going to hear from the neighbors tonight that, that the general plan or the Santan plan calls for the, all the, you should maintain and keep all the zero-to-one category in the general plan. We think if you read that specific principle in the general plan in isolation, I could understand how you could get that. But if you, the general plan, as Jerry Swanson used to tell me, is not to be read as one specific principle, but to be read as a whole, and you look at all the paragraphs around it, and if you look at the other paragraphs, at the introduction to that section, it says the Santan area envisions a combination of rural and also suburban neighborhoods. Then in that very same section that talks about acre lots, it says, we want to encourage unique, low-density projects mixed with open space or agriculture. So, what do you do when you're in a general plan and it says we want to encourage low-density developments? You look to the general plan, the general plan defines low-density developments as one to two. So, the general plan, when you read it as a whole, says we want to encourage this type of thing in this Santan area, in this section, and that's what we are proposing. Again, Toll is proposing a low-density, unique project with a substantial amount of open space. Now, let me show you the plan that we've come up with. You'll notice that this plan is a little different than the one you have in your packet as a result of changes we made from the last neighborhood meeting, because there used to be a couple of lots right in here that were within 50 feet of the property line. We didn't feel comfortable about that after that, so we went back and we changed the plan and removed those lots, so that we maintain 90-foot of buffer along the east side, that's property line to property line, not building to building, but property line to property line, 90 feet of buffers along the east side, as well as 90 feet property line to property line along the north side. And then those lots were put in other open space areas, I think at the study session, the commission had said, you know, 26% open space, that's, you don't necessarily need that, Santan plan only calls for 10, we've got 20. So, let's look at what we did. We designed a project that is a executive-style gated community. Why gated? Because we want to attract the higher-end home buyers, the people who want to live in 35, 4, 5, 6,000 square foot homes. We still maintain, because when you're designing a high-end project, you have to have that open space, you got to have the big statement at the entry with large divided roads and big open space areas that ends into a big two-acre park, so we maintain the open space because we think we need it for the type of client that we think is going to buy this project, they want that high-end amenity. We put in 90-foot buffers, as I indicated, 90 feet, which is a massive buffer on both the north and the east sides, and again, this is tied to our development plan. And then we also increased all the lot sizes. In your, in your plan, in your packet, we had 13 and 13,000 five-square lots, we took that area, reduced some of the open space, and put it in the lots, and so that now over 50% of those lots are 14,000 square feet, and then you can see how that lays out, and those are dispersed through the project. Again, another point was, the study session talked about concern of one point of ingress and egress into this, well, this site accesses onto Adora Boulevard, that's a signalized, existing signalized intersection, and so there'll be these lots that go to a traffic signal, and we think if the traffic signal can accommodate the section, you know, the Adora project, we think it will be more than, more than capable of handling the traffic that would be generated here. Another thing we wanted to point out, there is no connection to the development to the east or to the north, and obviously to the west, because that's where the flood control channel, so the only way that somebody in this community is going to get in there, they're going to have to go out onto an arterial and then go into the community to see a friend or so forth, but there is no connectivity. Really, the connectivity is that big 90-foot buffer area. And again, in response to the planning commission, we made changes, we increased the lot sizes so that there are no deviations to the code. Now, what I thought I would do, there's a lot of changes that resulted, as a result of the neighborhood meetings, the meetings with planning staff, and meeting with the planning commission, I listed out some of these, but we went from 137 lots down to 117 lots, which we originally thought two to 3.5 was a good general plan category, because that's what this area was in 2001, and 2003, 2004, 2005, 2006, 2007, that's what this was, but after meeting with the neighbors, we thought, you know what, let's go to a category that's more, is a transition between the two to 3.5 and one, and, and the zero to one, and that was the one to two category, and so we reduced the density. We changed the road layout, the neighbors will remember, our original plan had the entrance coming in, and then having a road running up this side, and also up over here. Well, the neighbors didn't want that road to go straight all the way up that side and then around, because they didn't want the traffic up against the wall, so you can see what we've done with this development plan, is we brought the road in and then around, and then this is all open space, so you can't get through, and then brought that road up and around. That may seem like a little thing, but what that meant was that we have to deal with the fire department, and so now we have to sprinkler these homes. And so, while it seems like a little thing, it was a significant thing for this project and a major concession. We also redesigned the entry, so it pulls away, you can see how it pushes the traffic away from the east side, and pushes everything away from the neighbors. And again, we provided trails and worked with staff on that. So, let's talk about the Santan character. It talks about priority, and this is the Santan character general plan narrative as a whole, not just one specific section, but it talks about providing quality neighborhood developments with recreational open space and outdoor heritage of the area mixed with quality suburban neighborhoods. That's what we're providing with this project, it's executive homes, large homes, gated community with a lot of open space. Now, I don't know that I was going to say it, but I'm going to say it here, there are a lot of people that want executive homes that just don't want a big massive lot. Now, everybody thinks, oh, if you're an executive, you have to have a 35,000 square foot lot, that's not the case. I wouldn't want a 35,000 square foot lot, I've got about a 15,000 square foot lot, and I've got five citrus trees in my backyard, and I got to pick up about 70 oranges, 50 to 70 oranges every Saturday. I don't want a big lot, some people, and if I had a twice as big 35,000 square foot lot, that's twice as much to maintain, but there's people that still want the big home, but they don't want the 35,000 square foot lot, and so that's what we're trying to go after here with this unique project. We're maintaining existing low-density, again, is defined by the general plan, low-density is one to two, very low-density is zero to one. And then use open space and buffers to buffer residential facilities, which we do, residential projects, which we do, we provide substantial buffering, I think Al did a great job of talking about all those tools that you can use to bus, buffer residential development. That's not a checklist, that's a toolbox. That's not a checklist, that's a toolbox that planners have with streets and open spaces and similar lots. Those are tools in a toolbox that a planner can look at and say, okay, if I'm going to buffer these two lots from each other, what tools do I want to use from that toolbox? Well, we've used all of them. We've incorporated all of those tools from the toolbox. By providing open space, we have 20% and a gated entrance and the 90-foot buffers separation, large separation. I don't think you're going to find 90-foot separation anywhere in the Santan Plan for this type of a project. And again, increasing the lot size and providing a substantial amount of open space. And again, Al talked on this, so I'll go through this real quick. We used all those tools in the toolbox. We used separation using open space, we used separation using streets, and we used similar lot size. You put 14,000 square foot lots 90 feet away from 35,000 square foot lots, we think that's a really good transition in this area. Now, I guess the bottom line when it comes down to, when you're sitting up there, I, I look at this self, if I were in your shoes, I would ask myself, is this good for Gilbert? Is this the type of project I want in my community? And I think emphatically, the answer to that question is yes. You've got the nation's number one home builder who builds luxury executive homes coming to your community and saying, hey, we, we did something at Stratlin, but we want to do something nicer down here. We want to do a big project, we want to stay in Gilbert, we want to do this high-end community. And so they, they've come forward, they're ready to build, they're anxious, they've been working to, to get this for months and months and months, and invested hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to get this project going, and they want to work on it. They provided large lots, estate-sized lots, they've provided large common areas, about 20, 12 acres for this project, trails gated with homes that are going to be about 3,200 square feet to 6,000 feet with basement options, with a home sale price of from 400 to 700,000 dollars. And so if I were a resident of Gilbert, I would say, yeah, this is what I want. I mean, this is a nice, high-end project. Toll doesn't build your production housing. They build nice, high-end projects. We think this is something that's good for Gilbert. We think this is a project that you won't find anywhere else in the Santan area. You've got lots of medium-density builders and projects. You've got lots of custom home, 35,000 and acre lots. But what you don't have is this type of a project, that tweener, that one to two, that fits a niche of people, high-end executives who want to buy this type of lot with this type of home. We think it satisfies that need and is desperately needed, and nowhere else found in that Santan area. And so we think this is a good thing for the town of Gilbert and would request your support. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Lake. Is there any questions for Mr. Lake? Commissioner Steyer?
Thank you, Sean, and the gentleman from Toll Brothers. It'd be good to see Toll Brothers back in Gilbert, because, well, I live in Power Ranch where Toll Brothers had built some houses. Sean, why the push to avoid a transition from SF-35 on the existing neighborhoods north and east, and your property being, not being SF-15, but wanting to be SF-10?
Chairman, Commissioner Member Steyer, that's, that's an excellent question. The answer to that is, we have provided a great transition by providing the massive separation between units and then 14,000 square foot lots. We haven't gone from smaller lots, sevens or eights. We, we've got large 14,000 square foot lots that transition with a 90-foot separation to 35,000 square foot lots on the east and 43,560 on the north. We think it does provide that type of transition. Now, why do we want that lot size? That's probably the next question. Why do you want 14,000 square foot lots? Because that's what the big segment of the society or executives want. They don't want the massive lot, because they don't want to maintain it. They'd rather take that space and put it into the open space that the HOA maintains, and then they would have a smaller area to maintain around their lot. But they can still have the big lot to entertain and have people over and, and have the type of comforts that they would like. So you get the, the big, big home, but you don't, the, all that excess lot space goes into the common area and open space.
Any additional questions for Mr. Lake? All right, thank you, Mr. Lake. We've got a few cards from those in the audience here tonight. We have, I think, one that wishes to speak, and the rest of them, let me go through quickly. Nithal Patel, I probably butchered that name, but, okay. He's opposed and does not wish to speak. Says SF-35 to SF-10 is a significant change. Rick Roman is opposed and does not wish to speak. Zain Khums, hope I pronounced that right, is opposed and does not wish to speak. Says, "I am opposed to these changes, as I feel they will reduce neighboring property John McLemore says he's opposed and does not wish to speak. They're maxing out a one-step density increase, this doubles the home count. We've got two from Nithal Patel. And Leslie Roman is opposed and does not wish to speak. And then we have one card reserved for Mr. Greg Ostapuck, who says he's opposed but does wish to speak. And so he's actually requested some additional time to speak on behalf of other residents and use the time that they would have normally been allowed to use to speak. So if you could give your name and city of residence for the record, that would be great. Need some technical help?
I don't see anything up there yet, so...
We can wait.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Greg Ostapuck. I live in Gilbert. I've been in Gilbert for the last 20 years. I wish I had Sean Lake arguing for us last year when we were arguing to save a piece that was one to two, and how it was a unique piece that we were losing, but they were arguing for higher density and, and won. So his argument was great, I wish we could have used it tonight to, or last year as well. Can we not up?
I think somebody's coming down to help you out. Need an owner's manual up there.
Yeah.
What's that?
Nobody would read it anyway.
Yes. Little notes on the post-it. There we go.
There we go. Thank you so much. Gilbert's a great place to live. Like I said, I've been here for 20 years, and it's a great place to, to raise a family. I was the neighborhood spokesperson last year on the 164th Street and Cloud Road. Land use classification change, which some of you may remember. We had a lot of resident input at that time, and quite a few people showed up. We didn't expect to be back here this year, but we are. However, it's been a challenge for the residents to, to kind of rally. Somebody felt deflated and, and whatnot and discouraged over the process from, from last time. If you talk to folks, they certainly support why I'm here tonight, but just wanted to share a little bit with you. We had about 70 folks, I think, last year, but, but not as many this evening. We updated the general plan in 2011. It was a two-year process, 56 volunteers, lots of subcommittees with all the stakeholders involved. Hundreds more provided input. Mr. Lake talked about the general plan and where it may have been in 2001, 2005, but, you know, it gets updated every 10 years, and in 2011, it looked different than 2001. And if you go back even earlier than that, you're, you'll find a density that, to, to suit your choice. So we're dealing with the general plan now at 2011, and we feel wise planning brings success. Gilbert ranks 33rd in the nation as best places to live. So the Santan character has a vision. We understood that there was growth was coming, and the change in residential land use to support that growth. The majority of the land was reclassified to R2 to 3 1/2. In return, we were going to preserve as much of the R01 as we possibly could, protect the existing large lot homeowners with proper buffering as well. We felt, or the, the committee felt that preserving and protecting the Santan character should not be determined case by case with landowners and 660 feet of residents, of existing homeowners. We need a bigger plan, so it's protecting of the whole area. Thus, the Santan character goals and policies were created. The Santan character area is a unique area, unlike any other in town. It's rural, if you've driven through it, you understand what we're talking about. Many people live here now because of that atmosphere. And there's certain goals and policies to reserve appropriate locations for large lot developments, maintain existing low-density rural residential neighborhoods, encourage the development of unique low-density projects. Here's a key one that, that is often overlooked. Land to be used for one-acre minimum lots and custom-built homes as identified in the land use map. This piece we're talking about tonight is identified at one home per acre, should be used as such. So the flood control opened up a partial for sale in, in the fall. Here's a great opportunity to do exactly that, to use one-acre minimum lots in an area that's identified for one-acre lots. In fact, R01 represents only 4% of vacant land left. 4% is all we have left of R01. Here's a South Gilbert land use map, and I, I gave you guys a copy because it's hard to see possibly up there, but the diagonals are, is the vacant land. And as you look at that map, you'll see the vast majority of vacant land is 2 to 3 1/2. There's very, very little of R01 left, much more of 2 to 3 1/2 left. Economic situations have, have changed developer's strategies. They get in, they get out, they move on. The demand now is for smaller lots and products to fit those lots. And they found that it's cheaper to, to buy R01 SF-35, change the density and rezone it for what they want, rather than buying a piece of 2 to 3 1/2 that's already zoned for their product. And that's exactly what happened here. The result is less R01 available and a true loss to the Santan character area. The alternative is to defend the Santan character area, what's left of it. 41% of vacant land in the R is in R2 to 3 1/2. Let's use that up first before we gobble up what's left of one-acre home sites. Realize that there's a demand for large lot developments still. Weston Ranch, which is located behind Lowe's at Higley and Queen Creek, they had a property of 57 3/4 acre homes. They entered the market in 2011, which was before things really started to turn. Average price of those homes was over 700,000. That piece, or that subdivision sold out in less than, less than a year. So there is demand for that. Really, there's nothing else down in our area now that's, that's larger lot. I did find a half-acre piece that TW Lewis just opened up. They haven't even had their grand opening yet. It's at Riggs and Higley. They're going to have 55, a half-acre homes. They anticipate selling out in about a year, is what they told me. Price range to 6 to 800,000. So that's about it as far as low-density properties around. So the developer bought the piece, they met with us a week before Christmas, which was a challenge for many of, many of us to meet, but that's the date they chose. They showed us a two-step jump in land use classification from R01 to 2 to 3 1/2. Even though staff has, has said time and time again, we'll support one step, they came to us with a two-step jump and an SF-10 pad with no buffer whatsoever along the SF-43. They had lots smack, as you can see, smack up against there with no buffer whatsoever. That's the first thing we saw from them. We, we said, whoa, what's happening? We asked for lower density, larger lots, and substantially increase the buffers. So they came back to us the day after MLK Day. They're still showing us the 2 to 3 1/2 land use jump, SF-10 pad. They took a few less lots and added a little bit of buffering. It was a better buffer for some, but not for others. SF-10 was too small, and it was still too much density for, for the area. Only after a private meeting with Mr. Lake and then the planning commission study session were some concessions made. They eliminated the side yard deviations, and they dropped the request down to R12. So they, they talk about compromises and the compromises they've made. They've, they've said, well, we reduced the density. We started at 137 lots, we're down 117. Well, the density for the land use that they bought the piece is 58 lots. You know, where's the compromise there? They said, well, they've increased the lot sizes from, they started at 11.5, and I think now, tonight, we just heard just before tonight that they're increasing it to 14, but 35,000 square foot lots are expected for that land use. They said, well, we're at, we're going to add some buffers and make some, some buffering as well for you. Well, substantial buffers are, are a requirement. You would never have passed it without adequate buffers against R01. We've touched a little bit about buffering and what it says. This is exactly what it says as far as buffering against one-acre homes in the Santan character area general plan. Word for word, it says peripheral lots adjacent to existing development, one acre greater, should buffer those existing large lots with subdivision designs, including open space, separation between the existing and new development with a local street, and lot sizes similar to the adjacent, existing adjacent lot sizes. And we've talked about similar lot sizes, and we did this last year as well. It seems like that's a similar lot size. And I tried to figure out, what did they mean by that similar lot size? So I tracked down some of that was on the committee for the Santan character area and also planning commissioner, and I said, what was the intent of the, of those when, when you were developing it? As far as a similar lot size up against a one acre? And I was told, well, we, we, the intent was at least a half-acre lot would be a similar lot size, and then as a good transition as well, too. So there is no similar lot size on this plan. Let me show you some examples of, of proper buffering against low-density parcels. These are some spots just around South Gilbert. Here's a piece that's at Seville and Greenfield Acres. They have a buffer, they have half-acre lots, and they have single-story homes as the buffer. They don't have one or the other. Here's another one. Similar lot sizes, you can see these are, these are well over half-acre lots. These are not SF-10s. And there's also a road as a buffer as well. Here's a third one where they've got a buffer, transitional lot sizes. Once again, they have larger lots and also a road as a buffer. A fourth actually has two layers of transitional lots and two roads as your buffer. This is common throughout the Santan character. If you, if you look at an aerial, this is what the interpretation is as far as having a decent buffer. Here's another one where we, once again, there's two layers of transitional lots and two roads as your buffer. And I found one as well that had no buffer whatsoever, but there were incentives. At, with the time the country shadows came in, there was only a few people that lived there. One of them wanted a road desperately to their house, which you'll see that they, they put in for them. So that was, they were very happy about that. The others wanted water to their lot line, because they wanted to develop that piece, which was 164th and Cloud. So they didn't offer any resistance to, to buffers as well, but they got water to their lot line, so that, that was their incentive as well. But in general, you'll find substantial buffering, transitional lots, and usually a local street as well. So they're asking for a general plan amendment. Now, is this good for Gilbert? How strong is the applicant's evidence for a general plan amendment? General plan amendment, applicants must demonstrate an improvement over the existing land use category. land use category. Not just an improvement to the site, but an improvement to the land use category. What improvement over the existing land use category has been demonstrated tonight? Has it improved traffic? No. We anticipate even more cut through, through our neighborhood as they try to get up to Santan Village as well. They're doubling the density. Is it improving the safety of the area? No. There's one entrance in and out. They've doubled the density in that. It's possibly safety concerns as well. Have they reserved appropriate locations for large lot developments? No. The lot sizes have been reduced from 35,000 square feet to 13,000 square feet. Are they maintaining existing low-density rural residential neighborhoods? No. They're doubling the density from 58 homes to 117. There are also a loss of potential horse and livestock property. There's not much of that opportunity left. There's a horse trail that runs right in front of this property. There's a sign that everything, perfect spot to, to have horse property, but you can't have a horse on a 10,000 or 13,000 square foot lot. Encourage the development of unique low-density projects. This isn't a unique project. This is track home product. It's made by Toll Brothers. It's a, you know, wonderful builder, I'm sure, but it's not a custom home or unique to the area. Land used to be used for one acre minimum lots and custom-built homes as identified in the land use map. Are they doing that? No. It eliminates the largest vacant SF35 parcel left in the sand tan character area use map. The applicant has only shown us it's an SF10 pad community providing open space and a community park. The same benefits and amenities demonstrated can be achieved, and we feel even better, under the current land use classification. There's no real justification for recommending a land use change. This property is great, but it would be best suited on a land use 2 to 3.5. Right next door, they could have bought this piece and it'd have been a great property for that, but not on this land use. Planning staff email says it best. And I believe you have a copy of that email as well, too. I'm going to jump down to the third paragraph for time's sake. This is a, an email from Kyle Miras from the planning department to Mayor Lewis back in October of this last year. And Kyle says, based on the general plan, both land use and sand tan character area, feedback received during the 164th and Cloud Road rezoning located a quarter mile to the east and the surrounding land uses, staff has advised potential purchasers that the site appears best suited for SF35 and development at that density. It doesn't have the same infill property or infill type development characteristics as 164th and Cloud and does not share any property boundaries with higher-density properties. The email to Mayor Lewis says it best, and we agree. We want residential development. Like I said, this is a wonderful plan, it's just not the right place. This parcel is best suited for development under the current land use and zoning. This is an opportunity for you guys to protect and support the dwindling sand tan character area. If this large parcel is not worth saving, which parcel are you going to save? Which one is left that you're going to save? I urge you not to recommend the general plan, land use amendment, and rezoning. Thank you so much, and let's keep Gilbert great.
Thank you, Mr. Ostapuk. Is there any questions for Greg? Mr. Sippel?
You had, you had mentioned a few slides back about a separation buffer, and it's been presented to us 90 feet. Is there a number in which you guys are looking for? I know you've kind of talked about the transition as well, and that's, you know, housing lot sizes. So if they were not to put any lots next to the property, what would you consider a good buffer? 100 feet, 120 feet?
I don't have a, a number, you know, exactly. I think if, the piece that was developed to the west of us, 164th and Cloud, up against similar lot sizes, I happen to live on that side of the neighborhood. I have 150-foot buffer next, next to me. But, you know, it can be done in different ways. You can have buffer and then if you have half acre lots, you know, in there, that, that's as well, too. But to put a number on it, you know, I'm not, not sure. Well, I know the residents definitely are concerned about buffering in general.
So another follow-up question to that then is, so maybe it's not so much the 90 feet as stick a half acre lot along that, that area to start a buffer? Give me 25,000, 28,000 square feet there.
Yeah, if, if you had a buffer and transitional, like the situations that I showed you, I'm sure that the neighbors would be, would be happy with that.
Even if it went back down to 13,000 square foot lots after that?
Well, I, we feel it's best to, to have the land use under the density that it is, which is 35,000 square foot, one home per, per acre.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Bianchi?
So you'd be more comfortable with an SF35 product with the lots backing up to one another similar to?
I can only, I'm not, I can't speak for the neighbors that live. You'd have to ask them more than I would.
Okay.
But you're speaking here tonight on behalf of the neighbors. So I guess I'm confused by that comment. Are you speaking on behalf of the neighbors in opposition?
I hate to say something that, that maybe, there's 14 lots that are, that are against that piece. So, you know, you'd have to talk to them to see what they're most comfortable with on an individual basis. There, there are some here with that, but in general, if there was one acre homes, you know, that would, there wouldn't be any huge buffer needed with, with that. But if you're going to, depends on what you end up with, but we would like some buffering against there, whether it be large lots, open space, you know, that type of thing as well, too. But I'd hate to say something that, you know, I'm just speaking in general to protect the sand tank character area, not specific land, landowners. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Further questions for Greg? Yeah, you, you did submit a card previously, right. Thank you, Mr. Ostapuk. Please come forward and give us your name and, and city of residence, please.
I'm Natal from, from Gilbert. So I can actually answer that question that you asked him. So if he had a one acre lot abutting my property, I'll be fine with that. I'm not fine with the 90-foot buffer.
But you're a 35,000 square foot lot?
Yes.
Is that correct? So you'd want larger lots next to you?
No, I want the SF35 next to me. That's okay.
SF35.
I think there was a question on whether you wanted that or whether you wanted the buffer.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else here wishing to speak? I think we have all of the cards. With that in mind, we'll go ahead and invite the applicant back up for rebuttal.
Technical difficulties here while I plug this in again. Please stand by.
We need the hold music during all of these changes. The elevator music.
Nope. Chairman, Commission members, again, Sean Lake here on behalf of Toll Brothers. First, let me just touch on a couple of things that were brought up. One of the original plans that we had on the north side had 15,000 square foot lots and they backed up. And one of the neighbors said, no, we don't want the lots. We like the, the buffer. So that, that was kind of the theme that we kind of carried forward as we kind of designed this plan to have that buffer as a major. And I think in other projects that we've done in the past, I tend to think people would rather have a buffer than having lots backing up to them. That's kind of a, that's why we've kind of stayed with the theme of having that big 90-foot buffer along there. I think Greg did an excellent job, but, but let me remind you, staff supports this project. Kyle's part of the staff. They think it's consistent with the general plan. They, they think it meets the goals and objectives and policies of the general plan. Now, let's talk about that specific section of the code that Greg brought up that talks about peripheral lots adjacent to existing development, one acre or greater. Now, keep in mind, on the east side, they're not one acre. They're 35,000 square foot lots. On the north were one acre or greater. It says you're supposed to use, and this is the toolbox that I kept talking about. These are the tools in your tool chest when you're trying to design buffer, buffering from development to development. You can use open space, separation, local streets, lots of size that are similar. Now, that word similar can be interpreted many different ways by a lot of different people. Some people would say it's a larger lot. Some people would say it's the same size lot. Some people would say you have to go 34 next to a 35, or I mean, or you go a 15, or you go a 10. That's a lot of, that interpreting that is a lot of difference. So let's see how the town has interpreted that in other projects in the Santan area. And so what I did is I pulled many of the same projects that Greg did, and let's highlight those. Just directly south of this project, you have the Acacia development right here. Those are 20,000 square foot lots that line the site and back up directly to acre, two, and three acre lots. With no separation of space, you just have half acre lots backing up to acre and two acre lots. That's how that tool chest was used to have that similar lot size in that instance of the Acacia development. In Seville, which is just north and a little east of this, how was that tool used here? You had 7,000 square foot lots, 18,000 square foot lots, a 30-foot drainage channel, and then acre lots, 43,560s. So acres to 30 feet to 18,000 square foot lots. Marbella Vineyards, which is a little north of Seville, how did they do that? They went from 7,000 square foot lots, I think the widest point is 100 feet, so I'll go with 100 feet here, to acre, two, and three acre lots over here. So sevens to 100 feet to acre and two acre lots. Country Shadows, they used a combination of both with these large open space areas with lots that, that backed up. What did we do? How did we use that toolbox to provide a transitional density or buffer to the existing development so they can be protected? We incorporated separation with space, 90 feet, which is much larger than most every one of those. We didn't back one lot up to existing development. So we have the 90 feet. We utilized roads, which was said there. But you'll notice here, we also on the north side have seven lots adjacent to six parcels on the north. If you look on the east side, we have 10 lots within 165 feet. We kind of felt going past 165 feet. That's, shouldn't really count, but within, within 165 feet or 100 feet, we have 10 lots adjacent to 10 lots. And so we used multiple tools to try to incorporate all of those into our design so that we could have a good transition and a good buffer. So at the end of the day, when this is built, those neighbors will look over and say, hey, this is a good buffer and that's a good development over there. I guess what I was thinking when I was sitting in the audience, oftentimes, you know, we get in here and we get into this mindset that it has to be a large lot because that equals quality, right? And I don't think that's the mindset that Toll has proven. They've proven that they can do a nice, high-end executive product on what I would call an estate, large lot, 14,000 feet. And when you incorporate those buffers, it's a nice product with a nice transitional buffer that protects the existing product. We think Toll will do an excellent job here. The executive vice president here, he's very interested in getting this project moved forward. They even had the COO from Philadelphia fly out, look at the site. He's interested in getting this project moved forward. They're ready to go. They want to get this project underway. And so we'd love to have them in the community. We'd love to have your support. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lake? Doesn't appear to, to be any.
Thank you.
Oh, you do? Commissioner Ayler?
I guess going, just more reiterating Bob's question, why, why the opposition to having a transition property, the larger lots between the property lines and as in going to an SF15 or, or something? Because you're getting there, you're inching your way up to it, but you're not there. So what's the opposition to that?
Chairman, Commission members, when you talk about buffer, we thought this was a good transition. Actually, if you take those lots along the perimeter that are 14,000 square feet and you add in that 90-foot buffer, and you, you'd have about a, if you took that buffer area, that open space and added into those perimeter lots, you'd have lots, as opposed to open space, and you'd have lots that are about 27,500 feet. I mean, that's a massive lot. But that's not what our customers want. They don't want it in a lot. They want it in open space. They want somebody else to maintain it. That's why we think this is a good proposal. That's what our, our market studies tell us that the people want.
Mr. Steiger?
Yeah. Sean, I appreciate your presentation. I appreciate the migration that your client has shown. But I think Greg brought up an interesting point. One of Toll Brothers' competitors called TW Lewis has found land that is currently in land use of 2 to 3.5, and they're building product on there that, well, they've always been competitive with Toll Brothers in the competitive sizes. So why, what, what's the benefit to Gilbert of pounding a square peg into a round hole and taking a 0 to 1 land use and trying to shift it to 1 to 2 and definitely not transitioning to the next densest, or next lot size, but shifting it to, down to SF10? So that's what I don't get.
Chairman, Commission Member Steiger, and I don't want to be argumentative here. I don't think we're trying to put a square peg in a round hole here. And while it is SF10, we've stipulated to provide much bigger lots with our development plan and also have the, the open space and the buffers. The transition that we're seeing is from 2 to 3.5 on our west and our south, and that Riggs corridor, which is a road of regional significance, transitioning to existing. Now, as, as you go through the general plan, this whole area was planned for 2 to 3.5. We, we saw that on the map. That's what this was planned for with the Santan plan. Now, the property owner, Greenfield Acres, they chose to develop less than 2 to 3.5, and that's fine. But that shouldn't have a detrimental impact upon this property because they chose to go less dense. This property shouldn't be burdened by that.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Lake. We'll go ahead and invite staff back up. Mr. Ward? Any further comment?
One comment. The, the neighbor indicated, okay, what's the, what's the improvement to the land use? There has to be a bona fide improvement to land use. What I'm thinking here, what I've seen or what I've heard so far, we have a self-supporting viable proposal. We have an active application with a known developer. It's self-contained, kind of an enclave type of community. It's a good quality development proposal. The developer has submitted or has a market analysis which indicates that there is a niche market for high-end executive homes on this property. Traffic access is directly to an arterial road. It's not conflicting with the, the character area. However, you could say, well, there is an opportunity to develop for 0 to 1 just as well as there is an opportunity to develop for a 1 to 2. It provides buffers. These are reasonably large lots. We know from other areas where we're seeing a lot of 7,000 and 8,000 square foot lots. These are really more like 13,000 plus. Readily serviceable utilities are available, and this is a, is a ready, ready-to-go proposal. So it's not a conflict with the adjoining uses. I don't believe it's going to adversely impact their lifestyle. However, as you mentioned, what we're dealing with here is, well, there's an opportunity to do it one way, while there's an opportunity to do it the other way just as well. So that's what I see as the improvement that would be vested with this project to the light, to the land use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Any questions for staff? Vice Chairman Peterson?
Al, is the density still 1.99? I mean, we've seen things shifted around with the new proposal from Mr. Lake this evening. Is the actual dwelling units per acre still 1.99 as it was presented to us?
Yes.
Yes, Vice Chairman Peterson, that's correct. It's still 117 lots on 58.8 acres gross. Divide that out, it's 1.99 dwelling units per acre.
Just a skosh under 2.
Correct.
That they're asking for. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for discussion. Commissioner Steiger?
Some, I'm gonna, I always like to talk about the forests, the trees, and the weeds. Three things. So, and there are no trees on the lot right now, but yet, this is kind of pertinent. When it comes to land use and, and zoning, and, and the, what the Santan character area, which is part of the general plan says, I think both sides, or both parties, excuse me, have done a great job of picking apart the Santan character area and just grabbing the things that are pertinent to their argument. But a couple of things stuck, stuck with me as we just look at the property, and, and when I went back this weekend and looked at the general plan, a couple of things stuck with me about the Santan character area, some of which both, both of them have mentioned. And, and it has to do with agricultural heritage. And Bridget, a couple of years ago, that was a favorite word of yours, and it was something you brought out a lot. But the thing that really comes into play here for me is that buffering and transition doesn't mean transitioning from the property that is .86 acres, point to the east, one acre to the north. It doesn't mean transitioning to the property on the other side of the canal or south of Riggs Road. The way this is written is it's about the property in question here. And a couple of points to make. The last time there was some property at 164th and Cloud that came before this commission, the, the 2011 plan had not been approved. And Planner Nathan Williams was the staff member who was the proponent of an amendment to the, or the staff member handling this proposed general plan amendment. And I asked Nathan to go take a look at what had happened to, since 2001, which was the last general plan, they're done every 10 years. And the 0 to 1 dwelling units per acre had been reduced in 2011, I think it was, when that came before us, by about 60%. That was the, the land that was available to be developed or had been developed. It was, the dwelling units 1 to 2 were cut by 40%. And I bring that up because at the forest level, what this tells, what this tells us with a couple more facts are, I don't think the Santan Character Area Plan is working for Gilbert right now. There's been a big discrepancy between what the Santan Character Area Plan says, what the vision is, and as, as part of the general plan, and what staff, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Town Council have done in terms of recommendations and actions. Because since I, in just the few years I've been on the commission, it doesn't seem like we're dealing with a case-by-case exception to that, which this is an interesting and a good example, but rather, all requests for re, for changing the land use of 0 to 1 and 1 to 2, since I've been on the commission, to a higher density, high land use and to zoning, have been approved. So when you get to the rubber meets the, the sky or the, the forest level, wow, that's, there's a heck of a discrepancy there. And just, it, it reminds me of a case we had just a couple of months ago with the Heritage Area and, and the drive-through. And the folks here that weren't aware that, like me, that the northern portion of the Heritage Area was actually a part of it. And so what it points out, and, and my message, because I'll be writing the Town Council members to say this, is, hey, I think here's another opportunity to where we need to ask the Town Council to initiate a relook at the Santan Character Area. Because when you look at not having held the general plan and the land use for any of the cases that have come before the Planning and Zoning Commission and the, and the, and the Town Council in four, four years, I'd say, I'd say the plan's not working for us. I think that what Toll Brothers, I wish what they would do is go find some land that is currently 2 to 3.5, land use 2 to 3.5 dwelling units per acre, and put their excellent product on that. I don't think if the town says no right now, that not with what Gilbert is, not with what we've, we've got, they're not going to walk away and go to somewhere else. They're not going to the West Valley to do this. So that's, that's where I'm at on the, where the, the rubber meets the sky, the big picture. I think it's a great, now, if we get down to the weeds, I think this is a great plan, but when I read the general plan and I read the Santan Character Area, I look at this, I, I can't support, I can't support another change when it's not really in accordance with some of the central tenants to the Santan Character Area.
Thank you, Mr. Steiger. Commissioner Steiger, do we have some, anybody else would like to give their thoughts on it? Commissioner Sipple?
Over the last year or so, I sat on a committee through the Chamber of Commerce called Executive Housing. And we talked about products like this and having these types of products available to our community. So, you know, I commend Toll on what they're doing. They did have a fantastic product in Stratlin. That product, as well as Weston Ranch, sold out in about a year, showing a need for this size lot. And those lots, I believe, in Stratlin were between 13,000 and 14,000 square feet as well. Very similar product in size, not only lot, but I think homes as well. I will say that this one becomes a little bit more appealing for an executive housing shopper, if you will, just because of its nature of being gated. And certainly, the price point is a little bit higher than Stratlin was, if I recall. And so one of the, the final thoughts that I have is when you're, when I was driving down Riggs, and I went down to the, the proposed site this, this weekend, and stopped there at Adora Boulevard, if you will, where that, where I guess the proposed entrance would be into this project, and I just kind of sat there off to the side and thought, wow, when you look south, what we're gonna, what's being built south? It kind of meets that intersection. It kind of goes along with that intersection when you're stopping going east-west. So for me, when I looked at that, looked at the sized lots, took in the recommendations from the Chamber of Commerce on executive housing, I'm excited to have Toll in here, and I'm excited to have him at this property, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Bianchi?
First off, I think both parties did an excellent job in presenting their cases tonight. I was very impressed with both sides. And as well as Commissioner Steiger and Commissioner Sipple's comments, I see both arguments on both sides on this. Where I come out on it, I think the GP request is a reasonable one. I understand the residents' concerns. In fact, you know, I was looking back through my comments through the study session, and we talked about SF-15 kind of being that transition, and we had questions about the SF-10 product. We talked about the amount of lots. We talked about reducing the, the open space to increase those lot sizes to address the deviations. We talked about the orientation of the lots and away from the residence, and providing that buffer, basically providing more flexibility, more creativity here, and really just adding that buffer to the adjacent residential. I think the applicant does have, they have tools in the toolbox, which they've kind of shown by making these concessions. But the applicant has done all this, and based off the concerns that I brought forth during the study session, all of them were addressed. So, in fact, I even think the new development plan is probably a little less creative than the one we first saw, but it provides even more buffer and it addresses the traffic concerns as well. So when I look at this proposal, I look at the Santan Character Area, this parcel, it's really not displacing any agrarian use. It's not replacing existing large lot residents that are already built on the site. And I think as the applicant has stipulated to a lot of these conditions, as this plat moves forward, I think it's a high-quality development if the plat progresses, and I think, I believe it would be a good neighbor to the adjacent development, so I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ayler?
I have to thank Toll, the applicant. They, I think have done a good job working and working with the neighbors, and I, I really do think there's room to grow a little more into making this even better site. I, I like the buffering, the 90-foot, and I can see how through both, both sides, where there's good and bad, and, and how the transition, I, I really look at this as a point where they, going into purchasing the property at a 0 to 1, and trying to come in and gain a 1 to 2, they're, they're getting there, and they're, they've been working their way to that, to that aspect. But I, I feel there should be even more transition between the, the R-35 and the SF-10. So at that point, I, I wouldn't be in favor of this project as it is today.
Vice Chairman Peterson?
There used to be two commissioners on this commission that actually worked on the Santan Character Area Plan, which I did not participate in. I was here on the commission at the time, but I always admittedly fell back on them and, and what they would bring to the commission for what the Santan Character Area was supposed to be. And now they're gone, and they've moved on, and we've seen, as Commissioner Steiger said, several changes in the Santan Character Area in the last several years. And I don't know if the plan's not working, but we obviously maybe need to look at the character areas. We didn't, we didn't change them, update them so much with the general plan update. We left them alone. We just incorporated them into the update of the general plan. And so they, they, they just followed through. They just followed through from what they were. The Santan Character Area, along with the Heritage District, doesn't have one developer, one landowner that supports, guides, cares for the land like Morrison Ranch or the Gateway Character Area, because they are owned mostly by one owner, and then they sell it off and develop it as it comes forward to us. So I, so I always feel like the Heritage District and the Santan Character Area need a little more protection from the commission because of that, because there isn't anybody just looking out for them as a whole. We, we need to, we need to protect that area. And I don't, I don't know if I've done such a great job of that in the past several years, I, I appreciate both sides of the story tonight. I appreciate the Toll Brothers development. I think that it's a fantastic product. I would love to see it in Gilbert. I'm, I'm not so sold on the density, 1.99 is, like I said, just a skosh under the 2.0 dwelling units per acre, and I'd like to see less than 117 lots in there. I'm, I'm a little more comfortable with the plan that we saw tonight than I saw at the study session, whereas we've gone up with some of the lots, up to about 14,500 square foot lots, as opposed to just all 1300 or, 13,000 or less, excuse me, 14,500 or 13,000 or less, which makes me a little more comfortable. And I don't necessarily think that you need so much transition so that it has to build up in size because you've got such a large buffer. I think the buffer handles that in this case. But I want to protect the Santan Character Area, and I would like to, I'd like to see li, I, I'm not comfortable with 117 lots with the 1.99 density with a gated community. I just think it's too many lots in a, in a smaller space that it might, even if the four lots that you took out were actually taken out, I might be more comfortable with that. But as it is presented tonight, I need to support the Santan Character Area and not support this project. Chairman?
That leaves us counting votes. That leaves us in a tough predicament here. Because I, personally, I, I lean more to my commissioners on the left, as far as, as, I don't know if I said that right, but these commissioners.
That's weird though.
I feel that, that this plan does exactly what the Santan Character Area calls for, and it calls for that transition. It calls for those buffers. It calls for all of that. And I think that the goal for those transitions is just what was implemented here. The, whether you call it large lots, being half acre lots, or you implement, similar to what the applicant said earlier, I was thinking along the same lines. If you combine the, the setback area, the landscape area on the east and north side of the property into those lots that are on the perimeter, you essentially have those lots, those half acre lots. If you incorporate, and that's exactly what it, it does, it meets the same purpose, just in a different way. It's landscaping and those homes. And I, I feel, I'm sorry?
And a road.
Well, in some instances, not, not all the way up, not all the way. But I, I feel that, personally, I think, based on the history for this particular parcel, and the transition, and the fact that the property owners to the east developed in a larger lot than they were technically required to, and so therefore, the general plan was changed after they developed to accommodate their land size, to show it was existing. I don't know that the overall intent was necessarily met in this particular area. It was just developed that way, and so you're holding the bar up a little high, I think, in my personal opinion, for this piece of property. And I'm, I'm not saying that Toll Brothers isn't a great developer, and they're not high-end, and I think all of those qualities would be included on this property. But I, I personally feel that, that it does meet, it, it does, as the applicant said, include many of those tools from the toolbox are implemented into this plan. And so I would be supportive. Now, here's where we stand. We are missing a commissioner tonight. There normally would be seven of us here tonight. And so, counting votes, we have a 3-3 right now, which would be a fail. And I think rather than go ahead and take that vote, I would recommend that we continue this case, and maybe the applicant can get together with the neighbors again, maybe there's something that could be worked out, maybe it could come back, an even better plan. But I would hate to throw all the hard work from the neighbors and the applicant down the drain tonight with any sort of recommendation of denial if we voted tonight, since it would be a split vote. So with that in mind, I don't normally, as the chairman, initiate a motion, but I will do so in this instance. I would recommend that we continue this case to our next month's meeting.
Second?
I have a second by Commissioner Sipple. All those in favor?
Can we have a little discussion?
Sure, before we take a mo, the vote, yeah.
I'd like to hear from the applicant to see what their thoughts are, because we as a board are only recommending, so are they comfortable with a, another month, or would they prefer to just take it to the next step and have their conversation with the council?
We have closed the public hearing, and we're in the middle of a motion, so I don't know that if, if we could accept a nod, yea or nay? Is that acceptable?
You can have discussion on the motion.
Right, but can we get comment from the applicant when we've closed the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Chairman, Commission members, we have no desire to try to jam anything down. Chairman, commission members, we have no desire to try to jam anything down. We would, we would agree to continue it a month, see if we could work with staff and the neighbors. We've tried to work things out all through the process, and maybe next month, we'll come back with something that we, at least, you know, a lot of us can support.
Or the majority.
We will try. We will work on the plan. That is our commitment.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, do we have, can we call for votes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, this case is now continued to May. Both the general plan and the zoning. Do we need to do those separately, or can we just continue them both at the same time? We can do it separately, just to clear up any confusion that may-
It would be clearer if you did it separately, but what I was thinking was that in the first motion, you didn't state which case.
Right. So we'd have to specify.
So if we could redo it with-
Separately, for both of them?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, so with that in mind, I would make a motion for case, GP 1302, that we continue the case to May's meeting.
I second that motion.
Well, all right.
Age before beauty.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and then for case Z-1303, I recommend that we continue to the May Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sippel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We'll look forward to seeing you again next month. When things like this happen, it usually ends up for the better for everyone, so it's usually a good thing. All right, moving on. Last case, we have case Z-12-23. It's amend the Town of Gilbert Land Development Code, Chapter 1, Zoning Regulations, Division 2, Land Use Designations, Article 2.1, Single Family Residential Districts, Section 2.104, Lot Development Regulations, Table 2.104, Lot Development Regulations, Single Family Residential Districts to allow up to 10%, so all of that, to allow up to 10% extra lot coverage for open-air structures and roof structures, and to amend the glossary of general terms to add definitions of open-air, open-roof structures. And we'll welcome Mr. Mike Malo.
Thank you, Chairman Whitman, members of the commission. It's late, and the commission has already seen this case at two study sessions, so I will try and keep it brief. This text amendment will add three new terms to the glossary of general terms in the Land Development Code, open-air accessory structure, open-air attached patio, and open-air porch. And it will also add a new subsection to the single-family residential districts for additional lot coverage, which we currently do not have in the code. On the overhead, I have the three definitions or terms that will be added to the glossary of general terms. I'll just briefly go over those. One is open-air accessory structure. These are really freestanding structures that would have to be placed in the rear half of the lot. They'd have to be detached from any other structure. The open-air attached patio could be attached to the house, but if it was attached to the house, it would have to be within the building envelope. And similarly, the open-air porch is a porch at the front of the house that would also be attached. Again, it would have to be within the building envelope. And any one of these structures would not be enclosed structures, so there'd be some openings, either one or two sides open. The roofs could be mesh, they could be solid, they could be lattice. And so it really adds structures that would allow for some additional shading on single-family lots that are maxed out by the maximum lot coverage. Admittedly, the, this text amendment really is targeted towards single-family homeowners so that they can add these types of structures to their lots, to enhance their outdoor environment on the lots. But it would also be available for home builders to use if they decided to add these types of structures to their lots and basically get a bonus of up to 5% on the lot coverage maximums. So staff is recommending approval of these because we believe that they will allow expanded outdoor shaded living space that is usable by people. They really wouldn't increase the intensity of the use on the lots, because we're not talking about adding guest quarters or secondary dwellings or enclosed space that would be heated or cooled. And, and they really aren't going to have any impact on stormwater retention, because there's enough free board on the lots and in the retention area calculations to accommodate these. So we really don't see any downside to it. This will allow people a little bit more flexibility in order to build these types of structures on lots. And so staff is recommending approval of the text amendment, and I'll be happy to answer any questions on terminology or regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malo. Is there any questions for staff? Vice Chairman Peterson?
Just one question slash comment. Mike, when we met yesterday, we discussed the fact that if a lot sits in a current PAD, it would remain intact, so maybe you should just discuss that real quick.
Yes, that's, that's correct, because this is really a 5% bonus on the base district regulations. If, if houses are already in a PAD, they really wouldn't be able to take advantage of this. So that's a good point. Thanks for reminding me of that.
Thank you.
They wouldn't be able to take advantage?
Because the PAD would dictate the lot-
It shouldn't.
If I can clarify. If there is a modification of the zoning district that modifies the lot coverage-
Only lot coverage.
Or specifies the lot coverage in the PAD ordinance, this would not override that. So they would still be subject to whatever is in the PAD ordinance. If there's no modification of lot coverage in the PAD ordinance, then-
It could apply.
The homeowner in a PAD could take advantage of this.
So no double-dipping, basically. Got it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ailer?
I just had a question. So does this retroactively, so if I had a coverage, I mean, as in, do you get to add, say, I was at my max, and part of it was an open-air structure in the back, so that was my max 40%? So now could I then move that 5% over to the, and then add 5% more to my building? I'm just asking in theoretical.
Yes.
Okay.
As long as you weren't in a PAD with lot coverage.
Yeah, as long as your lot coverage wasn't already amended in a PAD, and you had a maximum through the PAD that was different from code.
Any further questions for staff? Commissioner Bianchi?
Mike, just for my clarification, how does this factor in the future requests for housing proposals if they exceed the lot coverage? Is it just, I mean, if the lot coverage deviations are given, are they still eligible for this structure, or once they max it out and get that deviation, it's not even applicable to them? I'm just trying to think of similar proposals we've seen lately.
Commissioner, Commissioner Bianchi, if you'd maybe clarify that a little bit more?
Meaning if they come in and they're extending the, the maximum allowed lot coverage, and we grant them that deviation, does then the homeowner get the benefit of another 5% or no, since the home builder actually requested the deviation to the max coverage?
No, you'd, you'd only get, the home builder would be able to take advantage of it, but the homeowner, then that came afterwards, that 5% bonus would have already been granted.
So they couldn't come back and use it on their own?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Can you clarify again for me what zoning districts this applies to? Are there certain zoning districts that it does not apply to?
Yes. Yes, this applies to the SF-6 through the SF-43 zoning districts. So the, the two single-family districts that it does not apply to are SFD and SFA. So the single-family attached and detached. And the reason we kept those out was at one of the study sessions, I believe it was the second study set, no, the first study session, there was, there were several comments on the part of the commission that said that they were concerned about clutter on some of the smaller lots. SFD and SFA are pretty small lots to begin with, and so I think staff agrees that, that by giving this bonus on those smallest of lots, it may look a little cluttered.
Okay. All right. Any further questions from staff? Okay, I don't see anybody here wishing to speak on this item. I think we pretty much, oh! Councilman Daniels. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the dais. Comments, questions, motion?
I think we're ready for a motion.
Vice Chairman, let's go.
I would recommend, for the reasons set forth in the staff report, move to recommend approval to the town council for Z-12-23, a text amendment to the zoning code of Gilbert to amend the single-family residential districts, lot development regulations, and to add new definitions to the glossary of general terms to allow additional lot coverage for open-air structures, patios, and porches.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion by Vice Chairman Peterson, a second by Commissioner Ailer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
We lost a commissioner right before this last case. All right, with that, we'll move on to administrative items. Agenda item number 16, appointment of a commission member to serve on a transportation master plan steering committee. Do we have, I know that there is, Commissioner Steiger is interested, who happens to be the one who's no longer here, but we can appoint.
Gary gets appointed.
He's not here, appoint him.
He would, he expressed interest in being appointed to the steering committee.
All right, so we all agree to appoint him? Perfect. It says discussion and possible motion. I don't know how we make a motion on an appointment, but-
I don't think you need one.
Okay. So appointed. Number 17, minutes, consider approval of the minutes of the study session and regular meeting on March 6, 2013. Commissioner Bianchi?
I did not have any changes. Did anyone else?
Woo-hoo!
So with that, I would move for approval.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Bianchi, a second by Vice Chairman Peterson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to communications, report from chairman and members of the planning commission on current events.
It's too late. I'll just pass tonight. I just pass. I'll leave it to Councilmember Daniels.
All right. Thank you. We all, thank you. Okay, a report from Councilmember Daniels, as a liaison.
Just a few quick things tonight. Tomorrow night at 6:00 PM is Operation Welcome Home. We'd love your attendance. If you haven't been to a ceremony yet, we do have the privilege of honoring two members of our community who are returning home from a tour of duty. So great opportunities. Just prior to our council meeting lasts about 40 minutes, so we'd love to have you there. This Saturday is the Feathered Friends Festival at the Riparian, and the following Saturday, the 13th, is We Are Gilbert Day and Gilbert Global Village Fest. So great things. We are really grateful for the work that you guys have done tonight. I learned a lot tonight by sitting through this meeting, and I appreciate all of your efforts, so thanks.
All right, thank you. We have a report from Planning Services Manager on current events.
I don't have anything for you, but I do thank you for all your comments and your conversation with the public and your hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would be interested in knowing, maybe on each month, how many applications, just to see kind of where we're going, and economy-wise, how many applications are kind of coming in, how many single-family permits are being issued? I think that that's always something that's of interest to us, so that we kind of know what's happening, what to expect, what to look forward to. So if you wouldn't mind, that would be great.
We'll have that ready for you each month.
Great, thank you. All right, so do we have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, everyone.